My internet might be a little slow.
It has been bad all day.
Okay.
So, May Pro Tem, this is the public meeting portion.
Okay. Everyone present? So, can I get a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion. Executive session for.
Section 24-6-402-4E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations regarding the purchase of property.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rusty. Okay. Councilmember Alfieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Case?
Yes.
Councilmember Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Path?
Yes.
Councilmember LaBarre?
Yes.
And Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. So, we'll ask everybody to leave and to come into the executive session Zoom link, which you should all have.
Thanks. Second.
Case?
Rusty, Neil?
Jim Path?
Stephanie Alfieri.
Robert Zuluaga.
Suzanne Leclerc.
Jeff Wilson.
Michael Lawson.
Hillary LaBarre.
If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the opens meeting law, I ask that you state your concerns now.
No, but I would note Sally was also there.
Oh, oh, she's not on. Suzanne, can we mention Sally for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
She was present and is not currently in our meeting, but I'm sure she'll attend. Hearing none, the agenda item next is call to order and roll call. And pledge.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre?
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Path?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Can we put the flag up on the screen so we can do pledge of allegiance, please? I don't know if my internet is frozen. I'm not seeing.
Just focus on that one?
It's coming. There it is.
There it is. All right. It was rusty. All right. I can see the flag. So, my pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Think the audience can tell this might be a technically challenging evening. So, please have patience with us. We're doing our best. All right. Next would be ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. I don't believe we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. None. Next to consent to calendar. Suzanne, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This evening's consent calendar consists of two items. The first item being the approval of the minutes from the March 4th, 2021 regular city council meeting, and then the statement of expenditures for February 2021.
Any questions?
I have three questions on the expenditures that I'd like to discuss and then vote on.
Go ahead, Robert. Just make it quick if you can, please.
Oh, so you're taking this item now? Okay, good. So, um. First one is in my email. Do you have my email there? Otherwise, I've got them highlighted in the document. Oh, good. Okay. Thanks, Emily. First one's Muni Revs. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. First one's Muni Revs, and my question simply, and it's check number 111489. It's for, there's two different categories. One's the VBRBO, and the other one's hosting and support. My question is, is this a monthly expenditure? Is this an annual expenditure? And can you please tell everyone what you told me in terms of what we're now using Muni Revs for?
Sure. So, it is actually, it is a, that's a monthly expenditure. And so, one is for the lodging revs. Muni Revs and lodging revs are the same company. And lodging revs does our short-term rental monitoring. So, that means that they scour a bunch of different websites for short-term rentals. And then, and then they also collect the lodging tax from the hotels and short-term rentals. And then, the other charge is for Muni Revs, which we have transitioned to using them for the collection of sales and use tax.
And business licenses too, I understand?
Correct.
And is this a monthly charge, or is this the annual charge?
Those are both monthly.
These are both monthly charges. So, this is important when we get to the very last item on our agenda. And so, I just want to point it out. We'll be coming to the business licenses and Muni Revs relationship in doing that. So, I'll ask you about that later on, so it stays in line.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about business license.
Okay. Okay.
You have it, you have on the graph. Anyway, we'll get there. So, that's that. Thank you. That answers it. Second one is I'm happy with the refund development, so that's, that's not an issue. I had asked her about a refund for a developer, and the project just didn't go through. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. My last one is the $88,000 for the F-550. Can you tell me what budget that's been allocated out of and what department that's?
That is from our streets fund, the 410 fund, which is our 1% sales tax. So, that is a truck that was bought for streets maintenance.
Okay. I just don't recall the time of budgeting that was specifically itemized for that. Can you tell me whether we did allocate that sort of expenditure on a vehicle?
I would have to go back and look. I believe it was, though.
Robbins.
Yeah. Oh, Robin's on too. Robin, if you're on, you might be able to explain it better than I can, and what the truck is actually being used for. Or Kip.
Is Robin coming on?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay, the F-550. So, 410 fund that was actually budgeted for in 2020.
I was gonna say it might have been budgeted.
But it didn't get delivered until '21 because of many delays. COVID, other things. So, we paid for it in '21. So, the F-550 is replacing the tandem dump truck that we used also for a snowplow. So, we purchased that truck. Doesn't require CDL like the tandem did, because we're having troubles finding CDL drivers. It's not as big as the normal plow trucks, but it's, I'll say, the next best thing. And then, we also toured Pasco County's facilities, picked their brains on what they were using when we made the decision to buy the, the F-550. So, we saved about 100, 110,000 by not replacing the tandem with a full-size plow, because it's about $200,000 for a full-size plow. We have the F-550, which is much cheaper.
So, thanks. So, that's, that's good. And it was, so it was a carryover. So, these, these funds were a carryover that we didn't see in the allocation for 2021. Is that correct?
No, I, I. I believe it was, since it was delivered in the early part of the year, we do accrue things back to the previous budget year based on when they were ordered, not necessarily when they were delivered. But it's showing up in 2021.
So, if I may, yes, the, it would be 2020 funds that it would be encumbered and move forward. So, it's not coming out of the '21 budget.
Okay, good. If I didn't see the item, that's why. So, thanks.
If the, yeah, if we, if we had the agreements prior, it would accrue back.
Right. Thanks, Emily.
You're welcome.
So, do you need a motion? Unless anyone else has a comment?
Motion would be great.
Okay. My motion, we accept the items on the consent calendar, A and B, approval of the minutes, and approval of the statement of expenditures for February 2021.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Did you say Neil?
Yes.
Yes.
Path?
Yeah.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. And now, we are off to public comments, not on agenda. And Suzanne's let me know that there are some people live in the audience that have comments that they would like to make. So, I'm gonna let Suzanne direct who's coming to the podium. I would like to remind everyone you have five minutes. And I do write down the time you start and watch the clock, just to be conscientious of everyone's time in the meeting. So, Suzanne, if you would like to direct that, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The first one that I would like to start with was someone that signed up online to speak, and I'm not sure if she's on. Rob will have to help me with that. Her name, her, or his or her name is Muthana Yakub. Muthana, are you on with us? Can you raise your hand if you are on Zoom with us? Is she on, Rob?
See a hand raised.
I saw a hand raised, but I don't see it anymore.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Sorry, little technical difficulty. Thank you very much for hearing me, counsel. I'm Dr. Muthana Yakub. I am a physician here at Alton Medical Group on 6724, and I've been a resident of Woodland Park since June 2019. I wanted to bring this issue to your attention primarily as a way of seeking your guidance on this issue, because I'm not really sure what the next step to do is. And mid-January, a patient of one of our citizens came to my attention and to my office with symptoms resembling heavy metal toxicity, being that upper extremity neuropathy, dry mouth, abdominal pains, and an otherwise normal workup from previous doctor's visits. We started running blood work, and what we initially found was a little bit surprising. Acadmium level four times the upper limit of normal and well into that of occupational exposure. This is a person who has never worked in mining, welding, was never in the Navy, doesn't work in batteries, other than being a smoker, should have no reason to have acadmium level this high. It was verified. One would have to smoke something on the order of five packs a day to be able to get to this sort of level, and that's just simply not the case. Why this is a little bit concerning is that cadmium is not readily absorbed through drinking water. It's not readily absorbed through food. It's through the lungs. And so, this is an airborne exposure, at least as far as we could tell. What the source is, I have no idea. And that's the primary reason why I'm coming to you guys for it. I discussed the case with the telecounty Department of Public Health, as I was obligated to do ethically. And I did seek patient permission to be able to do that, as well as to come to you guys for help. They did not have a whole lot of data on the issue, since this is a relatively rare thing that people come across in an area with relatively low industry such as this, and the mines being reasonably far away from us. Their recommendation was to seek advice from the State Department of Public Health, and so I did. They got back to me in the middle of February, which they reached out to the state toxicologist. Their recommendation, unfortunately, there's not really much that I could do for the patient to mitigate the toxins, the toxic risks, other than just remove the exposure. The issue with this risk is cadmium over time is a carcinogen, can cause issues with GI distress, kidney failure. Actually, funny story that OSHA doesn't really require an employer to start taking action against it until somebody has already had signs of kidney damage, for background information. But other than that, the only thing that can be done is remove this patient from the exposure. How spread out is this? I don't know. I worry it could be a public health issue, but that's why I'm coming to you, is I don't really know how to continue going forward investigating this in the interest of protecting the citizens of Woodland Park. And since it's probably some kind of thing that, if not transiently, goes through an airborne source, so we're not near any mines, where there's no foundries in town, there's no smelters in town, I mean, if there's like a rock processing or something, I'm at a loss for ideas. Your thoughts?
Well, I, I lost you on one part. Did you say it is or is not airborne?
It is primarily airborne. It's estimated that the amount that a person can absorb in the air that is entered into the lungs is roughly about 25% of the content that enters into the person's lungs, much less through drinking water, much less through vegetables and soil.
Doctor, I have a question for you, and that is, how long has this patient of yours lived in the Woodland Park area?
I'm not sure exactly, but it's over a decade.
And, and of course, you've already looked at their past history of work employment and all those sorts of things?
Correct. No mining, never shipwright, never in the Navy, not a welder, never worked in heavy metal processing or batteries. In fact, she's retired now.
When you spoke with the Public Health, Health Office, what did they offer up in terms of common sources of cadmium in this area?
Mines, primarily, which, I mean, there's not really any around here, which is why this is so confusing. They did mention potentially like rock processing, cement processing. I don't know if there's anything like that in the area. Yeah. Sorry, not much to go on.
There is cement processing, and there are mines. We have huge gold mines in Victor, but not at the city limits. Does the person live within the city limits? Are you aware?
Somewhere south of Safeway in the eastern half of town, I could get her permission to disclose more detail, but I don't have that permission just yet.
Yeah, you can hold that permission for a private meeting with staff if, if, if you would be interested in meeting with staff. I can't think of any particular source. I know, I'm aware it comes from batteries. I know my husband's a pilot. He works on planes. There's potential exposure there. I don't know what this person's personal work history was. It can come from food and water as well. Not that it did. Who knows? You're saying you don't know where it came from, but you're attempting to bring it to our attention just in case. I'm quite sure our water levels don't carry it. I know that our, that Kip Wiley would be able to answer that. He knows how our water is processed and filtered. But also, depending on where the person lives, they could be receiving county water, or if they have a well, that could be something to look into as well. I'm not entirely sure. I guess I would have to ask our city attorney. I'm not quite sure what our responsibility would be, other than we're on notice, we can pay attention. And if you'd like to meet with staff with where the person lives and what their source of water is, that may be helpful, but I'm not 100% sure we can do anything about this, other than it's brought to our attention and look around. So.
Fair enough, and I appreciate your attention on it. I'll seek her permission to meet with staff, if that's okay. How can I, how can I get back to you guys on, on that?
So, you can either send an email to our city clerk, and she can give that to you offline here, or you can call the city and set up a meeting. And you could meet with probably the city manager and Kip Wiley, so he can at least let you know how our water is treated and filtered.
Doctor, can send you?
Sorry. There's a concrete facility that is right next to Safeway that processes concrete. So, if she lives near there, which it sounds like is possible, if she's there for 25 years, maybe that's a potential, but that would be a private entity, you know, she would have that issue with. It wouldn't be the city necessarily, unless that organization is not following city guidelines for pollution, so to speak. So, but feel free to get with Suzanne, and she'll give you the contact information for the city, and we can see if we may be of any assistance.
Sounds good. Really appreciate your help, guys, and thank you very much. Have a good night.
Sure. Councilmember Neil has a question.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre, is the concrete processing facility within the city limits?
I think it is, yes.
No. I, I'm sorry. This is Sally Riley. It is not within our jurisdiction. It's located in the county.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, so, we would not have the authority, because it's not within the city limits, to have somebody go down and at least do a preliminary meeting with that company to let them know, should we at least have a courtesy calling on that company to let them know that this situation has happened, so that they are at least aware of it?
Counsel, I would suggest that the staff assist him with the contacts and the things that he needs to do and next steps.
Right.
They would be well qualified to help him with his concerns and how to move forward.
Yeah, agreed.
Right. Okay. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I hope we can be of some help. So.
You already have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next person we have signed up for public comment is Ivan Melhoff. Pardon me? Okay. Then the only other person we have not for an agenda item is Mr. Tony Perry.
Okay. Suzanne, I also see we have a hand raised. So, after Tony speaks, I'll address. Oh, I see two hands raised now. So, after Tony speaks, I'll address the people who have their hands raised.
Thank you, because I cannot see those. So, thank you.
Tony Perry, 330 Ponderosa Court, Woodland Park. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre and counsel. I just wanted to come forward and formally introduce myself to Councilman Path. As he's aware, I wrote a public letter addressed to him recently, and I just wanted to offer a recall is a very serious matter for our community. And I wanted to offer to him, to me in person, to give us an explanation of the questions we've posed regarding the recall at our website, recallpath.com. I will say that the homelessness claim, we reject outright, but we are open to listening to any other argument that makes sense to avoid the recall. Thank you. Any questions? Well, I, I have a.
I'll let Mr. Perry know that not a, not a necessity to meet with you. It's very well laid out, precisely my explanation with legal backing, and it's very clear. Legal processes having been begun, it's very clear what the district attorney thought about it, and I took it into strong consideration. If there's a concern, then as citizens, people are totally capable of taking steps that they feel that they need to take, and I will certainly take steps that I need to take. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Perry, I, I have a question.
Sure.
And from what I, and I don't know the details of this whole case, but I do know that the Attorney General's already looked into the matters that you're alleging in public. And I have a, I, I just have a, a problem with the fact of if the laws are already determined that it's lawful, why are you stirring it up when we have so much in our community that needs to be settled? We have, we have a temporary city manager. We have a temporary attorney. We just lost our mayor. So, we have, we have just so much instability. It just seems to me that it's a very unnecessarily divisive step that I can't see the benefit of it when the law's already established what it is. I mean, if you don't like the man, I get it. But I just, I don't, can you help me understand why you're taking this approach?
First of all, we have seen nothing from the Attorney General, so I don't know where your data and source comes from. This isn't personal for me. I don't know, Mr. Path. It, it's a matter of living in this community, investing in this community. I laid it out in my letter pretty well. We have a lot of data and information on the website. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. Even the claim of homelessness doesn't apply, because Mr. Path owns a home in Indiana. And so, that was his original claim in his video, so we reject that. So, I don't know that the law is.
I wasn't asking you to go through and tell me all of your piece. I, I, what's your motivation? I, I just, it seems so divisive, and I just, you're, you're a longstanding community member, and I'm like, what's your, what's your purpose?
My purpose is to get rid of a bully who bullies staff, who bullies citizens, who, up until recently, he's been, he's a very astute political actor. Give him a lot of credit. Very clever. We believe that he was not qualified to be elected in the first place, because he didn't meet the residency requirement, and he is not satisfied to us that he has. And I understand the DA investigation. We can go through it, but the bottom line, it's not personal, and he knows that. He's played this game a long time. This is the first time I've written a letter to the editor in my 20 years here in the community. And I would argue that we've done a lot of positive, undivisive things, and I would argue that the hundreds of people that are pushing us to start the recall may feel otherwise as to what's going on. So, we're just asking for some relevant information to keep us from starting the recall, because it's a lot of expense, a lot of time. It could be divisive, or it could be uniting. So.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'd be curious with Mr. Perry to explain under what circumstances his effort is seeking to unite with me. And I'm curious if Mr. Perry could explain the comparison between him and his time in the community and my thousands of dollars spent investing in the community in a visit.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and interrupt here. We're at five minutes. And I believe that if the two of you would like to have that conversation, you are welcome to do so privately or through email. Emails are core requested, so it can be available to the public. Or should Mr. Perry like to come back at another date and address those questions? That's possible also. But for now, we're going to move on from the topic. Suzanne, do you have anyone else in council?
I do, ma'am, but they're on, they're here for item number nine.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and go to the people who have their hands up. If you have a statement or question that is on the agenda, we'll move you to that, that time. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and take it now. I'm gonna go to Mr. Fury, and you should be able to participate.
Hey, thank you.
Although, your internet may have frozen.
A minute ago.
There you go. We can hear you.
Okay, very good. This is just a comment.
This is just a comment that uh regarding what the doctor said a minute ago about a patient of his having cad, apparently cadmium poisoning.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that on the next door local neighborhood website, uh, someone reported that their catalytic converter was cut off their car while it was parked at Natural Grocers a week or so ago. There was uh additional chatter that uh people were stealing catalytic converters because catalytic converters have, have precious metals in them. Um, and my understanding is the primary uh material in a catalytic converter is cadmium. So I'm just connecting some dots here. Uh, whoever looks into this might want to check with the police department and uh, you know, that if, it's just seems very coincidental that someone's potentially has cadmium poisoning and cadmium is being stolen from catalytic converters.
That's a good point, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks. Okay, the next person I see is Carol Harvey. I'm gonna bring you in, and you should be able to speak now. You just have to unmute yourself. You are in the meeting, but we don't hear you.
Mayor Protem, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you so much, and thank all of you for uh enduring what I think has been a very difficult year for the council, let alone the city staff. But I did have a follow-up question to Mr. Perry's statement, and again, it is for uh Councilman Pfaff. Um, as you know, I'm sure I initiated the investigation with the District Attorney's Office into your eligibility to run for council, and it is still an open investigation. Uh, so my question is this. Um, the DA's office, as well as the Woodland Park Police Department, have determined you did not move to the city or did not occupy Bristol Cone Campground until the twenty-sixth of May, two thousand and nineteen, which would have made you ineligible to run for office. Um, can you tell me where you lived prior to um May twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen? Thank you.
That information was discussed with the district attorney quite clearly, and you're welcome to call me at any time, as you have refused to do so if you'd like to have a discussion about.
Councilmember Pfaff, you've, you're muted.
I had unmuted, I don't know why I didn't, but can you hear me now? Yeah, so anyway, uh, that, that was clearly discussed with the district attorney who came to the conclusion that there is no probable cause of any uh thing done wrong. I did explain it, you may not like the term homelessness, I didn't claim to be precisely homeless, but it is, it was, I was in transition, and we did it appropriately, I took legal advice from top attorneys in the state. Um, and so it's uh, it's quite clear what I did. If you'd like to discuss in more detail, you're welcome to call me, which you have never done, nor has Mr. Perry. And I think I will say, in regards to this issue being brought up in a council meeting, that uh the people, the two people who have brought this issue up during this council meeting have done nothing at all to contact me and ask what I thought about it. And the entire motivation for uh seeking this uh recall, which they are well within their right to do, uh, is entirely because of political and other disagreements with me, and nothing to do with anything substantive, so. But I'm perfectly willing to bring counter substance to anything that they would like to do, and I do legally occupy this position, and I was uh elected by the people of Woodland Park and will be re-elected by the, the people of Woodland Park, should I see.
Mayor Protem, if I may, uh, add one more comment, my simple question to the councilman was, where did you live prior to May twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen? Thank you.
And, and Mrs. Harvey, I'm not accountable to you for anything, I was at a friend's house while we were working to get it there, and I had earnest money available to Bristol Cone while they were awaiting me an opportunity to take a position in their place, so the earnest money, it adds another layer of accountability to this. So there's, it's, it is absolutely not an open issue in my mind, and I do know the district attorney said there was no probable cause and did close the investigation, and they're welcome to call me if they have any further.
I think Councilmember Pfaff feels that he's answered the question appropriately, so let's go ahead and move on from the topic, thank you. Suzanne, do you have anyone else?
No ma'am.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised. So we are going to move on, we have no unfinished business, we have no ordinances on initial postings, and we're going to move on to nine A. And under this topic, this is a decision made by council, so I'm not actually going to take public comment on this topic at this time. I am going to let our attorney Jeff Wilson address um an issue that he had brought forward to us. We're just going to get it clarified and settled this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, you received considerable written uh information about this previously, which I, I'm not gonna go over, I'm happy to answer any questions about it if you have any, but I'm not gonna go over it tonight. The uh uh fact that this is before you tonight is a, is an illustration of how the Woodland Park Charter is more stringent than the state law in the area of conflict of interest. Ordinarily, this would be a private matter between the city attorney and the council member um concerned. Um, my job as the attorney is to bring this issue to the council member's attention, then it's up to the council member to decide what to do with that information, and that's the end of it in most jurisdictions. But as you all know from my prior communication here in Woodland Park, the charter provides for another step and requires uh another step, indeed, a vote on whether um such a conflict exists in the case where uh the person declines to declare a conflict. At our last meeting, uh, Councilmember Pfaff uh explained his reasons for not believing that he has a conflict and expressed his intention not to recuse himself, which triggers uh this section three fourteen of the charter and the vote that is before you.
I have to remember to unmute myself, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm going to um ask Councilmember Pfaff if he has changed his mind or would like to continue um with not, not recusing himself.
I have determined that I will not recuse myself, the reasoning for that, for those who were not involved beforehand, is that the applicability of this portion of the uh, of the uh the, the effort to um hold off this particular piece of the legislation uh for further consideration is something that does not apply to me solely, and it applies to uh, I, I believe dozens of people in this town who uh have the same arrangements that I do. And so therefore, it's similar to something that would apply to a renter in an apartment facility uh if some change were made that uh affected indirectly the rents or, or any part of the agreement that a renter would make with someone in an apartment facility. So um it's, it's a, it's not applicable only to me, and therefore I will not recuse myself, and it is an important matter for the city.
Okay, is there uh any further discussion?
Um, I'd like clarification from Mr. Wilson. Uh, this is put before us to decide whether or not there is a conflict of interest, but what is ultimately the the, the outcome of that? We can or can't determine there's a conflict of interest, but my understanding is we have no authority to strip Councilmember Pfaff of his vote on an item, correct?
No, that's, respectfully, that's not correct. The charter provision provides that you may do precisely that by a majority vote, and that's what's before you tonight.
In determining that he has a conflict of interest, it automatically means he cannot vote on the issue?
If a majority of the remaining members of council vote that he has a conflict of interest sufficient to require him to recuse himself, then yes, he would be, uh, he would not be able to vote on remaining votes on that issue.
Thank you.
This is a, this is the scheme developed by the voters of the city and the city charter, so that's why we're, we're doing this tonight.
Last session, we had an issue come up, and I'm I better be careful here, I'm not sure if it was an exec session or whether it was an open meeting, but we had one of our councilmen bring up that he had a conflict, what he thought was a conflict of interest, and then put it before all of us to suggest whether we thought he had a conflict of interest. And quite frankly, from my perspective, that's his choice, his right. His right not only as a citizen, but as an elected official, so um this, to me, crosses over the line of free will and personal responsibility for each of us as council members, so um so I struggle with the fact of, of taking this uh part of the charter and saying that I have the right to say to somebody else on council, you don't have a right, so I just will be voting accordingly. Is there any comment you want to make on that?
Well, I agree with you, it's, it's uh Councilmember Pfaff's choice, absolutely. And as I said, in every jurisdiction, that's the case, it's the elected official's choice. Uh, and in most jurisdictions, the decision by the elected official would be the end of the matter. But here, the people have adopted a charter in the city of Woodland Park that provides, that mandates this additional vote, so as the attorney, um, th- this isn't a delightful experience for me, but it is what the charter requires. So here we are. We could argue about the policy behind this aspect of your charter, but um from the attorney's point of view, I have no choice but to bring it forward.
And I share. August sentiments. Um, at the last meeting, when Councilmember Neil had posed his question, uh, the consensus was, we all agreed, it was entirely up to him and his decision to decide whether or not he had a conflict of interest in the matter and his need or not to recuse himself. Um, we've all been given these positions by the voters um to vote accordingly. I think that deserves a certain amount of trust. I don't pretend to know uh the specifics of any uh council members' conflicts of interest in any situation that might come before us, and the precedent that this sets um is extremely concerning um that we might at any time as a body determine any conflict of interest for any one of us um without, without knowing the full scope of it. I, I leave it in the hands of each of my council members uh believing and trusting in them to be prudent and do as they need to within their office to determine whether or not they have a conflict of interest or not, and whether or not that means their recusal.
So I'm just gonna break.
I have a question for you, Jeff, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Would you please explain um how this came to us? Because I believe, Jeff, that you provided us an opinion um that um, just tell me how this arose, because past, we have had a, a, a question about a conflict. Um, and they looked to the other council members to say, for instance, um, Val at one point brought up the fact and disclosed that he was on the Saddle Club, and this is just a very simple example, but I'd like for you to explain the difference, if you would, that he was a member of the Saddle Club, and we were voting on funding the Saddle Club uh for community investment funding. I also brought up that I was on the Symphony Guild Board of Directors. We looked to the rest of the council to say, does that look like a, and, and they were okay with it. Tell me the difference between that and what we're looking at now.
Okay, I think I heard two questions embedded in that, one, how did this come to be, and, and the second, sort of what's the, what's the standard? The way it came to be was um part of my job, the consequence of a, a vote tainted by a conflict being cast on a legislative matter is that the legislative matter is legally vulnerable. Um, there is a disagreement among attorneys about how vulnerable it is. Some say the uh matter which is tainted by a conflict is what's known as void ab initio, meaning it's void from the beginning, it was never effective. The majority opinion, as I, it seems to me, is that the matter tainted with the conflict is voidable, meaning someone could go into court and get the matter thrown out if they wanted to go to the trouble of doing all of that. Um, because there is legal jeopardy to one of council's enactments, and because I'm the attorney for the council as a whole, my duty in any municipality that I represent would be, if I'm concerned about a conflict like this, to bring it to the council member privately, explain my concern and what the obligations of a person with a conflict are under the law. At that point, it is up to the council member, as I was talking with Councilmember Zuluaga about. What was that? About the saddle.
Nothing, I was, I was, it, I, I don't know, picked up some background noise, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So that's how, that's how it came to be, I, you know, it's part of my job to do this, to bring it, and, and it's only because of this wrinkle in the fort, uh, or in the Woodland Park Charter that we're talking about this publicly. Usually, this is a private matter. Uh, in terms of the uh degree of connection I believe you were asking about, that gets into a really important point, because the standard in the law is whether the person has a personal or private interest in the matter pending, sufficient to color their judgment, where they can't be relied upon to be objective. That's really a judgment call for you all. Um, if, if there seems to be a, a specific enough benefit or burden uh on an individual by virtue of certain legislative enactments, like the moratorium here was, in, in my opinion, then my job's to bring it to Councilmember um Pfaff's attention. But here in, in Fort, in, in Woodland Park, uh, the final decision is really up to those of you on the council as to whether the conflict is sufficient. I hope that's a response.
I want, that explanation helps us see the difference, and I believe it is the, the um long-term consequences of, of a conflict that would affect this law that would be enacted. Am I correct in just a small statement?
Well, it's the, it's the possibility of legal exposure through a vote tainted with a conflict that causes me to have to step forward as your attorney. But it's absolutely, it's absolutely possible that I do my job, I raise this issue, you guys consider it, and you are not as concerned. And you could vote that it, this is not a disabling conflict, it's the couns, the charter leaves it up to you guys.
Thank you.
Better or worse.
And, and by the way, since the charter says that when the uh council member, it's three fourteen specifically refers to the council member not uh bringing up any known conflicts of interest that they have, and a reason for either recusing or not recusing themselves. I will say for the record here that uh it would never have occurred to be that there was a conflict of interest, and if, it could have been perceived so, which I, I, I just honestly could never have seen that it would. Um, that, uh, because I'm perfectly fine to, if it negatively affected my ability to be where I'm at, I'm perfectly fine to either purchase a home or uh rent an apartment. Uh, we did this uh precisely so that we could uh, just to save a little money so we could get our business up and running when we moved here, with no even thought of running for anything. But had it, had I perceived even a potential conflict of interest, I certainly would have either said, I'm, it, someone could perceive it, and I'm gonna go ahead and not recuse myself or recuse myself, because I have, I have maintained in thirty years of. I have maintained in 30 years of having official and unofficial positions related to political efforts that I've been involved with and or elective efforts. I have always run the highest level of integrity, excuse me, of integrity. So had I known that it could even be perceived that way, which I could never have foreseen. At least not for me personally, because I can go wherever I want. Then, then I certainly would have brought that up. And I'm also explaining this now as a way for people to know on the record. You know, my thought in that I can live anywhere I want. I don't, I don't, I don't need to do this. We did it on purpose because it's comfortable for us. And it worked for what we were trying to do when we moved to Woodland Park for the express purpose of finding a community we enjoyed and starting a business. And by the way, it was no easy thing for me to move to Woodland Park at all. I was driving an hour and a half back and forth to Denver every day when we were in session during the Colorado General, General Assembly. So I'd moved here on purpose, not on, not for any other reason than that. So anyway, that's, uh, that's just by way of explanation for on the record and for everyone's understanding.
So council member path, councilor Ralph here, I'll come back to you. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Here's the perception, right? You live in one of the parks that is affected by this rule. If it passes, you will only have five months to stay there. So you would be required to pick up and figure it out. So if you vote to allow or not allow the 180-day rule, how do you think people would perceive it if you vote against it? Because it will affect how you find a home. That.
No, actually, actually would not. The provision, uh, allows for people who are currently in places to continue there indefinitely. And, uh, it applies only to new.
The moratorium.
No, that's not true.
Only stay for 180 days.
The, it did not affect the ability for people to stay uh, who had already been in a certain place, which is the reason why I saw no conflict.
I don't understand it that way. Could we have Director Riley step in and explain that? Because it's my understanding that it's 180 days and you must, you must move. You cannot stay for longer than 180 days. If I'm misinterpreting that, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
But, but by the way, if I might, if I might interrupt real quick, I want you Sally to be able to talk. But by the way, we did have public discussion and came up to that very, uh, opinion when this was discussed when we first realized what the concern was. So go ahead. I just want to make that statement as well. We had that discussion in council. Go ahead, Sally. Sorry.
Thank you. The adopted ordinance that we are placing on hold on a much moratorium speaks to a maximum of 180 days of occupancy in the campgrounds. And it all depends upon how the city approaches the enforcement of the 180 days. So my background memo to you had suggested that the folks who are currently in these, uh, campgrounds will not be evicted, um, based on the 180 days, that we would phase that in with new occupants recognizing that the current residents of the campgrounds need to be able to, uh, maintain their current, uh, living standards until an appropriate time for them is to relocate and find other living arrangements. So that is all dependent upon how council directs staff to implement or enforce the 180-day rule. And I just want to add that there has always been a law in place that campgrounds are to be used on a temporary or short-term basis. We had not enforced that because we didn't have, how do you define temporary? So the planning commission felt it was important to include a finite timeline for the meaning of temporary. So that's, um, where we are.
Sure. So where we are, i- if I can summarize, it is a 180-day rule at this moment. It is under moratorium. So nothing further has been acted upon, but council has also not yet made a decision as to how they will enact that rule. So Jim, do you understand why there could be a negative perception with the fact that you live there and have the ability to control, not control, but have the ability to influence this vote? Because it does favor your residency.
So it, it doesn't based upon what Sally gave as her recommendations in it, which is what I took into account in part related to it. That was also communicated as my understanding, at least it was communicated to the owners of those facilities. So no, it did not directly affect me. Had we had a vote, which we have not even proposed at this point, to determine how it would be, um, uh, enforced, certainly at that time I would, uh, recuse myself because it would directly affect me at that time. So up to this point, it had no direct effect on me at all based upon the discussion we had, because we all, I believe, I, if I recall correctly, we discussed this publicly, but certainly with Sally's guidance, there was no effect on me. So therefore no reason to recuse myself. Had there been, I would have considered it, but I might not have recused myself, but I definitely would have made a statement that there is an effect on me and why I would or would not recuse myself. So.
Right.
And certainly if there's a, if there were ever a vote to direct them how to enforce this in terms of grandfathering people that are there, I certainly at that stage would be over cautious not to, to, uh, cause myself to, uh, to be part of this. So because it didn't directly affect me in any way, I did not in any way, uh, see a need to recuse myself or to inform everyone about it. And I still believe that it doesn't, uh, that, that it would still fall under the fact of if anybody on this council lived in an apartment and there was a change that affected either the rate of lease or the lease agreement itself for that individual person that lived in an apartment, then it would not be necessary at all for, uh, any council member to recuse themselves. And this is legal counsel that I took once this matter came up from Jeff and Jeff is aware of, of that discussion also. And he followed up with my legal counsel about that as well.
Well, a lease is monetary, so it could have a monetary effect on those people. So I don't entirely agree with that argument. I do understand what you're saying. I appreciate it. My concern is, so the moratorium vote is not that big of a deal to me, right? But my concern is consistency then with the topic. If you don't recuse yourself from this, but will recuse yourself from a vote regarding the zoning? Great.
That's, that's not true. I don't, I don't believe that I am required to recuse myself from the overall zoning aspect of it at all. If I were to consider recusing myself, it would be related to enforcement of the current provision and directing the city how to do that. And I'm saying that based upon what Sally just said. If there were a vote to direct the city to determine how to enforce that, then that's when I would consider recusal and I would either, uh, recuse myself or give my explanation specifically and publicly as to why not. So, you know, this is, this is not any game playing on my part. It honestly, based upon the guidance from the city, didn't affect me in any direct or indirect way. And by the way, fiduciary uh, considerations are not the only considerations for recusal.
Right.
There are many things beyond that. So. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Trust me. I know this rule probably better than any of you because I experienced it constantly. So.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I, I just, if, if that's important for you to say, then I'm going to say, no, I certainly uh, understand it as much as you. I've been running through these situations for decades now myself in political work that I do.
Right. So what I'm going to say is council, you've been advised by your legal attorney to make a motion to recuse Mr. Path because he does feel there is a concern of conflict of interest that could circle back to us regarding this ordinance. So if there is a council member that would like to make a motion, feel free to. If not, no one has a concern, we can move on.
Well, I would like to get the, uh, insight from the rest of the council that has not spoken. Um, and so for that purpose, I will make a motion that the, uh, council recused Mr. Path from this vote and from this issue.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Path, I, I'm going to second it because I, it's the perception. And I am going to hope that you trust that, uh, we are going to vote on all of these topics with the citizens' best interests and your thoughts on it will be well represented. So I do second.
With your rusty, thank you.
I'm, I have to make a comment. The idea that it is the perception that a vote on this by Mr. Path is inappropriate because it affects him directly can be extended to all of us on any vote involving property of this city as a whole. For instance, when we wrote on mill levies, when we vote on anything that affects all of the citizens. So i- it's not just Mr. Path that's affected by this vote. There are many other people involved in this. And that is why we don't have to recuse ourselves from every vote we take that might impact the entire city because it impacts us as well. Because it's not just us, it's not exclusive to us. So this idea that there is a perception that his vote is affecting him disproportionately, that could be made to all of us who reside and all of us do reside in the city. It's a requirement to be a council member that somehow we have some sort of vested conflict of interest on all the things that we vote on involving any property or policy or procedure that we enact.
We just had a very long conversation, um, on public comment about, uh, the residency and the long-term nature of Mr. Path's living in a campground in a motor home. It's not a motor home per se, but it is a trailer. It's not a permanent dwelling unit. We just had this long conversation and it, in my opinion, and I'm not saying that I'm right or I'm wrong. This is my take on the matter. It is not personal. It looks as if we're speaking out of both sides of our mouth. Um, it's okay. And he's, and, and he, and he legitimately ran for council because he's got a permanent place to live in a campground. And now we're talking about an ordinance that regulates the permanency or not of living in a campground. I see that as being a direct conflict and that's just my opinion. But the perception is certainly there. And so that is the reason it's not personal. I just, in, in the interest of the city and the citizens, I just feel like it's the right thing. And to have to go through this long diatribe, um, is unfortunate.
And again, anything we vote on that affects all the properties in this city, we could all, or someone could claim, we all have a conflict of interest on. Again.
Thank you.
Property taxes, whether it involve any sort of utility rates. We all could be claimed to have a conflict of interest because it affects us directly.
Yeah, I, I know we have a motion on the table, but this is just such a slippery slope for us to be each other's determiner of what we consider something we recuse ourselves or don't. Uh, I just, I think this is a very dangerous part of the, of the charter that, uh, we need to walk carefully on, or we're going to walk into a bunch of political nonsense.
You're muted, Hillary.
I'm unmuted.
I, I understand what you're saying, Stephanie. And here's the rub, right? Council member path, if you would have agreed to just recuse yourself, we wouldn't have to have this discussion simply out of the fact that people are perceiving it to be a problem. And numerous times I've recused myself from council simply because my name is perceived to be a problem. So I've never put it on the shoulders of council. I take it upon myself to do what I believe is the right thing. I understand council member path thinks it's right to not recuse himself, but our attorney has advised otherwise, and I recommend we take the legal advice. I'd like to entertain the motion at this time.
We have a motion, Hillary.
And it has been seconded.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Uluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries three, two.
Suzanne, we'll move on to nine, item nine B.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Item nine B is, uh, the ordinance 1392 establishing a 12-month or moratorium on the effectiveness of the definitions of recreation vehicles and recreation vehicle trailers. Uh, that was established with ordinance 1383. Uh, we have been discussing this moratorium for a couple, few meetings. So with that, I'm, uh, recommending approval to establish the 12-month moratorium so that council can meet with the planning commission, the citizens, the campground owners, and be able to discuss this issue in a, um, appropriate manner. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Sally. Uh, as I recall, when this entire ordinance was brought before council, in the background to it, it was bought, brought with a multiple of, uh, multiple topics. There was the, uh, the whole issue of single family in multi-family dwellings. And then there was a bunch of writers put on it in terms of language. It was presented as language. We're just simply changing the language in the, uh, in the ordinance. And you've brought this, uh, moratorium in front of us. My question to you is, uh, I would be in favor of striking that ordinance period and splitting it up into the necessary compartments that it is. I mean, you tried to put in RV, how many RVs people could have on their property? And I remember specifically saying, I don't think that that should be included in here. And fortunately you tabled that. Your, uh, that your department's, uh, recommendation was one RV per, per household, but my comments to you was, yes, how about a parent who comes for their kids who haven't, having a baby? And they want to come and support the mother for a period of time. So now they have two RVs there and now they're in violation of ordinances. So my question to you is you're bringing to us this moratorium, but perhaps we should strike that entire ordinance and break it up into each of its component parts. So it's not such a monstrosity that's having such a negative impact across the community.
So Director Riley, I'm going to address this real quick. That's why it's critical that you read these ordinances before you vote on them. The vote could have easily been no. I voted no for this ordinance because I didn't like all the things that were bundled into it and I didn't agree with the zoning change. But that is why we are doing a moratorium now so that we can address this ordinance sufficiently and go through it and re, either introduce or remove certain issues we are either comfortable or uncomfortable with. So Director Riley, I'll let you address the question that he asked also, but I just wanted to chime in and say you could have controlled that by voting no in the first place to all of you.
Thank you. This ordinance originated, uh, in order to address the higher density in a multi-family zone with single-family units. There was a need to identify the definitions of modular units of RVs and, uh, stick-built homes. This was in order to align those definitions with the state, uh, definitions and make it consistent because people have a difficult time distinguishing what a, what they. what a, what they generically call a tiny home. And in this community, the county has allowed RVs to be a tiny home for permanent habitable space. That was not what the planning commission felt was beneficial to our community. So the ordinance, the original ordinance was to address the small manufactured homes and the confusion that recreational vehicles are oftentimes lumped into that category. So the planning commission worked on this ordinance for over nine months and took tremendous input from the community. And then it was forwarded on to the city council. So the moratorium is to place a pause on the campground and definition, definition of recreation vehicles. And now you can address that issue as a finite, small, although it's a big issue, but a very narrowly focused new ordinance to move forward with.
Councilmember Neil?
Now, the thing I'm uncomfortable with is it's a 12-month moratorium. I have been working with Ms. Riley to get a better understanding because the definitions are changing. In the last email that we had, Ms. Riley, it appeared that what you thought the definitions were, you learned something new. I'm still trying to wade through the ANSI standards and the other standard. I am uncomfortable with a 12-month moratorium. I would like to see the definitions laid out and understood better. I disagree with some of the comments I've heard that RVs are not made to be lived in for permanent because there are people in the social economic scale that count on RVs to be their permanent home. And I'm not inclined to write instantaneously, say you can't. We don't have a plan for the housing for some of the entry-level job that we have, or teachers and stuff. I have no idea. I've seen a lot of comments on Nextdoor. There's a very nice thread going on and reading and trying to digest everything on it. I don't want to just kick this down the road 12 months. I think we got a bigger problem, and I'm uncomfortable with the 12-month duration. I would like to attack it or task the planning commission to attack this one head-on. So I'm inclined not to support the moratorium right now.
Councilman Neil, our intent is not to drag this out. It's up to the council when you want to establish the first workshop. And yes, we should try to come to resolution as soon as possible.
So if we vote no, if this fails, will we have an opportunity to accelerate it? Versus if we vote yes and it passes, it kind of grandfather's, we're going to take 12 months to figure this out.
We can amend it here as is.
Right.
Would like to shorten the timeframe? We can do that with our motion.
I would like to hear.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I would like to hear councilmembers Zuluaga and Alfieri's thoughts on the duration piece of it. Do you mind making a comment? Just your thoughts?
Well, I, I second what Mayor Protem LeVar said. I think this was somewhat ill-conceived. There was a lot of, in attempting to close a loophole, we created many more giant gaping holes with this ordinance. I think this is very much a great example of the issues that further regulation can, can create within government. Ultimately, I think there are a number of things within this ordinance. I was not on council to vote on it that I would like to see readdressed that I think are very harmful to our community and our residents and the ways in which they choose to live and the places that they choose to inhabit, as well as overregulation as far as, when you have, when you have types of residents that are clearly defined by the zoning that, that they are in, and that still can, requires a conditional use permit to come before council for approval. I have yet to be able to wrap my mind around the thinking behind that. I am all for putting a moratorium on any part of this ordinance in order to keep it from impacting our residents further until, and I think there should be a very, very fast and, and focused priority to readdress this and fix it. So putting a moratorium on the impacts of this ordinance in moving it forward and enforcing it, I am all for, for as long as it takes until we get it right. We have, and this has the ability to impact our residents very, very negatively. And I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to take measures to, to stop that from happening in the meantime until we can fix our mistakes for the long term.
I, I agree 100% with what you're saying. I, I just think, you know, in trying to fix one problem, we created an inadvertent, much larger and worse problem. And the more I dug into it, working with Sally, the more I realized, I'm not even sure how, how this would all play out. So I would like a much higher priority and the timeline of 12 months. I'm not even comfortable with the moratorium other than I don't want to put anybody out on the street. And I want to do some sort of analysis on the infrastructure of the RV parks. And Sally, you may have already done all of this to make sure that the RV parks that do have permanent housing, that the infrastructure is fully capable of supporting it, our, our water purification and all of that. I assume, I'm making an assumptions. And I've had some conversations with people trying to figure out which way do I, I think this should go. And some of the comments are, was the infrastructure designed for year-round at full capacity? I don't know. What are the tax implications? I don't understand that completely, and it hasn't been laid out to the council if we're going to say that RV parks can be permanent or we keep it at 180 days, you know, temporary. There's just so many issues that I'm uncomfortable right now that to Mayor Protem LeVar's, I think it was a, I, I think we messed up. And we need to peel it apart, break it into pieces, and put a high priority on solving it so that there's no question in the RV park owner's mind what's coming or not coming, and, and what's coming for anybody that lives there now. And I want them to know that we're not here to throw them out on the street. We're going to protect our citizens. Citizens first. I ran on that.
And councilmember Neil, I, I would just say on top of that, and I'm happy to sit out there and say, I'd be more than open to considering going to the extreme and repealing the whole thing at this point and starting from scratch. Recognizing the planning commission did a lot of work on this. But ultimately saying, okay, we've learned from our mistakes. We've learned what was missed, what was overlooked. And to really try and head off any additional ongoing negative impacts to the citizens to just say, we're going to start, we're going to use this as a starting point, learn what we did wrong and, and really start from scratch and see if we can get it right the second time around. I, that would even be acceptable to me. I know that might seem somewhat extreme, but I'm not past that point at this point.
Yeah, I'm probably with you on that one.
Councilmember Neil, you remember when we, this was first brought before us. We were all newly elected. Well, I won't say all, you and I were, certainly. And councilmember Pfaff. And we looked at that list that came from the planning department. And we said, I don't think so. Take this back and rework it. And you certainly had the concern for a single-family and multifamily zoning. And that was one part of it. But look at all of the other pieces that were added as riders to that bill, which I remember we were each brought into the planning department's office in pairs. And we talked about these things, and we said, okay, which part do you like? Which part do you want? Do you support this? Do you support that? You remember the spreadsheet? And that whole thing was really putting us through a bunch of hoops to satisfy a whole list of recommendations that came to us from the planning department we didn't agree with in the first place. But because we massaged this little part of, of the ordinance and this little part of it and this little part of it, it became a, if I can say it, a divide and conquer. Oh, well, you want this part? Well, you want this part? Okay, well, we'll accept it. Let's go for it. And I'm with councilmember Alfieri. I am absolutely for just repealing this entire thing and breaking it out into each of its unit parts. And for us to limit this, just to address your, your idea of limiting this moratorium to less than 12 months? You have a bunch of tenants and residents who are on tender hooks already. And now you're going to say, oh, oh, they're going to try to do it in six months. Now you're giving an uncertainty for a short period of time. That to me would strike to be a higher level of anxiety. You're either, we're either going to repeal the whole darn thing or we're going to, I mean, a year is, is a safety zone really for the, for the residents, not for us. I mean, we can do it in whatever speed we do, but I would think we need to be thinking about their sense of domicile and stability and security there. But I mean, we're going to hear from the community here in a little while anyway. So anyway, that's just the background I want to give you and, and so those are my thoughts.
Mayor Protem LeVar, will we be taking public comments on nine B?
They, they can be heard. I don't see any hands up though, and I know that Suzanne doesn't have.
I do, ma'am. I do have a list of public comments for nine B whenever you're ready.
Okay. And I do see a hand just popped up too. So let me just, we'll go ahead and go to those comments. But I do want to remind councilmember Neil that I think the 12-month moratorium, although the time length is frustrating, I think is necessary because we do have the entire planning department, the public and council who would all like to participate in this issue. And trying to get everyone's schedules aligned and those meetings lined up could be a lengthy amount of time. And the moratorium preserves currently the people's right to remain where they are. If we lift or end the moratorium, then council will have to decide how we are going to enact the ordinance you all are not satisfied with.
I agree. Robert's point about it will cause more to the citizens.
Yes.
If we say no to it, I want to reassure the citizens. So I think I know which way, I'm leaning right now, but I do want to hear the public's comments.
Sure. And I saw councilmember Case has her hand up. So we'll go to her and then we'll go to public comment.
Thanks, Hillary. I just want to remind the council, this is a moratorium for a specific purpose. And it is addressing a short-term need for some businesses that have some significant effects from this. If I might suggest for thought that we consider this and we can give direction to staff with regards to the rest of the ordinance, if that's the choosing. I voted no for this ordinance in its entirety. And, but we're considering a moratorium on two specific, on some sections in the ordinance with regards to some concerns for some major impacts to some specific businesses. If we could address that and then maybe direct the staff if we want to go further into addressing the ordinance in its entirety. Just a thought that I had. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Good point. All right, Suzanne, I'm going to go ahead and let you start with the people who are there in person, and then I will address the people who are here online.
Thank you, ma'am. The first person we have signed up is Ivan Miffla. Milhoff.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Protem LeVar. I'm, I want to start out by saying you're talking about an issue that's based on a fabrication. It's not even based on reality. And page four of this memo that was put out by the planning director, she said housing, she talks about housing laws. And states federal and state governments only consider HUD homes and IRC modular homes as legal permanent housing that can be occupied for longer than 180 days. Well, how can that be true when neither of those organizations have jurisdiction over recreational vehicles? It might be true with the park, but it's not true across the country. Now, it states that RVs and park models are vehicles. And therefore, they're constructed in compliance with American National Standards Institute. Well, that's half correct. They are also built in compliance with the National Fire Protection Association standard NFPA 1192. So you got half of it. The rest of that statement is, and are designed for temporary and recreational use. That statement is 100% fabrication and has no basis in fact. Here. This is NFPA 1194. This is the standard for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds. I'm going to quote from this document, which is what you should be considering, not some fictitious HUD thing that doesn't exist. Now, section. I'm going to quote from page 22 of this document NFPA 1194. Page 22, NXC Glossary, Section C 20.1. RVers, individuals that use camping units for RVing and camping, including but not limited to the categories described in C 20.1 through C 20.6. See, 20.2 Extended Stay. RVers and campers that stay in a given recreational vehicle park or campground for an extended period of time. The term extended stay is generally used in describing four groups of people. And you've talked about them already. Individuals who select recreational-centered lifestyle and choose a specific location for a traditional season. Those are sunbirds and snowbirds. Item two, individuals who have selected RVing as an interim lodging during temporary transfer to a new locality or while awaiting construction of permanent housing. Three, individuals who frequently relocate for employment purposes. Four, individuals who have selected a recreational vehicle park, trailer, or camping unit as a housing alternative for extended periods. Section C 20.3 Full Timers. Individuals who have opted because of the benefits of recreation-oriented RV lifestyle or for economic reasons to use their or for economic reasons to use their camping unit as their only or primary residence. That is the nationally recognized standard, not a fabrication of an individual. Now. Lost my last page. So you're just about to set city policy based on a fabrication. You should just end this nonsense now and strike those 11 words that limit length of stay in ordinance number 1383, series 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Milhoff. And I certainly hope that the city will send out invitations to those property owners to make sure that they are aware of the times and places of our workshops. I would also recommend to individual council members, if you're interested, I'm sure that Mr. Milhoff would be more than happy to have the discussion with you regarding his book and definitions that he just went over this evening. Suzanne, I'll let you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Baldwin.
My name, my name is Jeff Baldwin. I live at 505 Falcons Rest Place in Woodland Park. And we own Woodland RV Park. I'm not here to ask you to vote against the one-year moratorium. I'm here to put on the record why, once you have agreed to the one-year moratorium, we need to address the 180-day limit ordinance immediately. Okay. Okay. Have you heard what I've said?
Well enough, but it's going to be better now with the microphone where it is. Thank you.
Want me to start over or do you want me to just continue?
Please continue.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. We are already losing business. Our tenants are upset and nervous. My wife, Jean, and I bought the RV park in 1984. That's a long time ago. There were six long-term RVs at the time in the park. We now have 40 spaces with long-term RVs. We are full most of the year. And I would like to address Mr. Neil about the infrastructure. The lines in the park are buried six feet. That's so that the park can run year-round. If it were shallow, there's another park in town can operate because they don't. And that's not Bristol Cone. They don't have the line six feet. So when it was originally built in the early 60s, when it was in the county at that time, the lines were put in six feet. The park, going back to the early 60s, has always acted as a long-term stay. When we heard just by accident about the passage of the 180-day ordinance, we were dismayed, to say the least. We were never notified that it was even being considered. Now we are losing business because folks, they want to move in, knowing that they can't stay as long as they would like. I served on the Planning Commission for 10 years from 1988 to 1998. And then on council for eight years from 1999 to 2006. I know there's a process whereby an impacted party has a chance for hearing or redress. That should have been taken place before the ordinance was passed. We understand that the ordinance stated, started in the Planning Commission. The 180-day number was pulled out of the sky and rubber stamped by the council without any understanding of the consequences and no notification to the parties who have their lifetime work at risk because of the ordinance. Why 180 days? Why is it okay to stay in an RV for 180 days, but not 181? Why should we tell the over 80 families that will be affected by the ordinance, they cannot stay in their RV for more than 180 days? We do think we need to, we think that you need to be the nanny that tells individuals living in the city of Woodland Park that they can't stay in their RVs for more than 100 days. But in Teller County, El Paso County, and millions of RVs nationwide have chosen this lifestyle and are allowed to do so freely. We cannot stay in business without year-round full occupancy. We will be forced to close the park 180 days after this moratorium ends. Get rid of the length of stay part of the ordinance. I just turned 77. I'm too old to start all over again. And do any of you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a, just a comment if I might. Thank you both for articulating the concerns of of our lack of understanding of this when it was passed. And once again publicly, I apologize for having cast my vote for this in my in my early tenure on council, learning the pieces, learning the ropes and realizing that it was just, it felt like a big bite of the apple at the time. And we were steered into this, but I take responsibility. And I, I personally give you my commitment that what you're saying and the, I mean, not only do you have a breadth of experience in our community, both on council and on the planning board, but why, why weren't you consulted? I mean, I'm just astounded that our Planning Department and Commission haven't talked to you folks. And you're the, you're the, the primary business owners that this affects. So I again sincerely apologize to you publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. And council, remember, it isn't just the departments that can talk to people. You can also pick up the phone or go visit property owners just as easily to do your research as well. And all of us on this council are a wealth of knowledge. We all have different specialties, different areas. So I would always recommend, if you're not sure about something, send an email to each individual council member and ask their opinions as well. Because I think all of us can be helpful to one another on these types of issues. Suzanne, is there another?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Tony Perry to speak.
Tony Perry, 330 Ponderosa Court. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. On this issue, I have very strong opinions as well. First of all, those 80 families, and I know Jeff Baldwin, I trust his numbers. They have a right to choose where they want to live, however long they want to live. There is no data to show that there's any deleterious effect to themselves or to the community for making a choice to live in those campgrounds, period. Number two, all the council wax poetic about the residents, which I completely agree with. But in the year of COVID, where businesses have been impacted in crazy ways to put two businesses that have been in business doing this for a long time. I think, Jeff, if I did the math right, and got some tutoring early 35 years, the reality of it is that, you know, irrespective of the Planning Commission's work, let's don't place this all on the planning, on the city staff either, or even as council. The reality of it is, there's a lot of very complicated issues that Councilman Zulaga pointed out that needed to be unpacked. And what I'm going to implore this council to do is step up and provide leadership tonight. Do not keep these business people, these families in bay, at bay for this moratorium. Now, I agree with the moratorium on all the other issues that maybe need to be looked at and understood, understood more deeply. But to keep these businesses wondering another six months, another year, it doesn't really matter. The reality of it is that it was stated that it was never enforced because they didn't understand how to enforce it. I would argue both of these businesses do a great job. The residents in both areas have never been an issue as far as I know, and I pay attention. So I'm going to implore the council to step up with serious leadership and carve out these businesses, these two campgrounds. They've earned the right to be at least grandfathered. And you have the, I think you have the authority to do that. And if you want to unpack the other issues, do a moratorium on that separately and allow more time for understanding and comment. But I would not, in fact, doing a moratorium puts them at risk just every month, every day that goes by. And to put those businesses at risk is unnecessary. There is nothing to be gained by not giving them an exemption. And I think it's in your authority. I'm looking to the attorney. I'm not really sure. And so I'm going to implore the council to step up. Step up in the last meeting, you did a great resolution that basically does nothing. Okay, I'm going to implore you to do the right thing for the citizens and for these businesses. It matters. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
Question for Mr. Perry?
Yes.
You said two, two RV parks. We're talking about three unless there's a reason why you, you said two.
I'm only aware of Bristol Cone and Jeff's Park. I'm not really sure of the third one. I am aware of the infrastructure in Bristol Cone and Jeff's Park. Can't speak to the other one. If it's in the same circumstance, and maybe that owner hasn't had proper notice, then I would throw them into the exemption as well, to my knowledge. And I'm pretty integrated into the business community here. I think we would have learned if there were serious issues. Now, again, I want to make sure that the Planning Commission's work was important. The city staff I have respect for, don't always agree with, but I have tremendous respect for. Let's unpack those other issues. Let's give these businesses the exemption now so they don't have to wonder whether they're going to lose residents, whether they're going to lose their business, their cash flow. They already have enough pressure. So, and the residents, they have a right for stability too. And at the end of the day, it's the business owners' rights who made those investments to do what they do. There's no evidence to the contrary that they are, no evidence that they pose a threat to the residents or the community. Those residents have a right to choose how and where they live, period.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. May I ask then Mayor Protem a question of Ms. Riley?
Certainly. Before we proceed, if you might, Ms. Labar, can I just raise an issue to the attorney? The council voted that Mr. Pfaff was recused from this item on the agenda. And I noticed he's still in the meeting with us.
Oh, actually, that's a good point, Kelly. We forgot to ask, ask Councilmember Pfaff to step out for this issue. I guess we can ask Mr. Wilson if he wants to address, address that since we're a little, little late.
Well, what the law says is that the recused member shall not try and influence the way that other members of the panel vote.
Okay.
So he hasn't said anything. I didn't even realize he was still in the meeting.
I didn't either until just now. I changed my view. I just, I just know that's been the, the practice of the council for many, many years. And I just know, I just noticed it. So I wanted to bring it to the attention of the council. He's gone.
I can testify that we we could bring him back. He, his deportment, he has expressed absolutely no emotions. One way, he has left no opinion in my mind which way he's wanting council to. He has just sat there listening.
Yeah, he's been so quiet that we didn't even notice he was there.
I would like him to come back just to hear if that's acceptable to those that felt he should be recused from the vote. But I think he's more than.
It's fine. I just, I just want him to point it out because of procedure in the past.
Yep.
Thank you. I don't care if he's here or not. I just.
I'm, I'm not sure even. I don't know that that even makes sense because he's, we voted by majority that he's recused. That doesn't mean that he closes his ears and he can't listen to what's going on. So I'm not sure that that's even consistent for, to my.
Then when, when Ms. Labar recuses herself in the future, she does not have to leave the room. Ms. Labar recuses herself in the future, she does not have to leave the room.
Well, that's not germane to the topic of tonight, but I'm just, I'm. So bottom line is, he doesn't get a vote. So he doesn't get a vote. That's it, you know? He doesn't get influenced.
Yeah, whether the, whether the person that's recused leaves the room or not, there's no law on this. This is whatever the convention is here in Woodland Park. I guess as your attorney, my advice would be to pick a course and stick with it. But, but there's no law saying somebody has to leave the room. There is a law saying they can't try and influence the remaining members of the panel on how they vote.
Right. Just traditionally, I believe, council, the recusing member has always left the room. That's all.
Traditionally, but we didn't do that last time either when Mayor recused herself.
And I brought it.
Topic, but proceeded over the meeting.
Right. Yeah. So, no, I think it's neither here nor there, but it was a a point we overlooked. But anyhow, we'll return back to the topic. However, I am concerned he did appear to leave and he needs to get back. So if Suzanne or someone can text him and let him know he can either return now, it's fine. Or we need to remember to have him return when we are finished with this topic.
We're texting him right now, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Neil, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I want to continue on with the question from Ms. Riley. Sally, are you still there? You're not, your video is off. Okay, thank you. Sally, do you know if the infrastructure for all three of our current RV parks, can you tell us the differences in the construction of the different parks? Or would you actually need to do a little research on that?
Would prefer to do some research. I think there are many, many issues that the council needs to unpack with this. For example, these are not mobile home parks where a mobile home has an individual tap. These are on a commercial tap. And is that fair for permanent housing to now not pay into the tap issues? I mean, so we do need to have some additional work on the proper infrastructure for water, sewer, gas, propane. I think that you have not discussed the safety aspects or the fact that these campgrounds will turn into de facto mobile home parks. And then there are no standards that are applied to long-term residents within a campground. So please try to keep an open mind. We do are concerned about the business owners and what is fair, what is safe. And please, we'll keep an open mind. There are many, many issues associated with this that need to be carefully addressed or carefully considered.
Okay, does everybody feel that they have enough information that they would be comfortable? Okay, does everybody feel that they have enough information that they would be comfortable with the motion to approve ordinance 1392 at this time?
I'm wondering, do we have more comments from online?
You're right. I totally spaced that out. And I still have a hand up on the computer as well. So Suzanne, did you still have anyone?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I'm going to bring in Mr. Nakai. I apologize. Thank you, Councilmember Alfieri. Okay, Mr. Nakai, you're brought into the meeting. You're free to speak. You might be muted.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Council, Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. So Mayor Protem, please correct me if I'm wrong. The motion before us tonight is just a moratorium on a specific 180-day limitation and definitions. We are not, in this meeting, adjudicating that particular topic. It is just a moratorium that is before council tonight. So am, am I correct in, in, in that interpretation?
You are.
Okay, so, I, you know, I, I know you guys, this is a, an important topic. And I'm all for splitting this up. I'm, I, I can tell you, I'm, I'm the first guy to tell you that the, the biggest problem in Washington is these bills that are 9,000 pages and have too much crap in them because no one agrees on everything, so let's split them up. Okay? But right now, I think the city has gone taken steps to, we enforced a first moratorium, and nothing happened in that, whatever 60 or 90 days happened. So Sally has already explained, I believe to everyone more than once, that you know, we need to have, I guess, work sessions. We need to have coordination with the planning commission and, and council and the citizens through work sessions and, and a revised ordinance. That will all happen. And the city has, she has explained that when we have closure on this issue, the moratorium can be pulled at the same time that a new ordinance goes in place. So Rusty, I don't think that that because we put 12 months on it means that nothing's going to happen for 12 months. This is up to you guys, okay? You guys want to drive it, drive it. Okay, I think it's just that it, we're just, you know, wasting a lot of time putting one moratorium in after another. But she's, I think she's already explained that we can pull the moratorium as soon as you guys decide what we want to do. So I'm just trying to get closure on this meeting. I do not believe we're here to adjudicate, to investigate, or to be an impromptu work session on this topic. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Nakai. You know, there's an open position for mayor on council. Keep us all organized. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Okay, now that I don't think I've missed anyone, I don't think there are any further questions or comments. I think we might be prepared to make a motion on this ordinance. Would anyone like to do that?
So I will move to approve ordinance number 1392, establishing a 12-month moratorium on the applicability and effective date to definitions containing, contained in ordinance 1383. I would also like council to consider giving direction to staff or the attorney to, based on everything we've heard tonight, to look at composing what I believe would have to be an ordinance to basically repeal this and start from scratch with all of this in place.
I absolutely second that with the caveat to have staff prepare a repeal ordinance of 1383.
Well, we can only make a motion on the ordinance on hand, so. But we can bring that forward on a next agenda as well.
Let's separate the
Right.
We need to address the ordinance and then we can give staff direction.
Robert, I think, has already seconded it.
Correct, but with clarity. So Suzanne?
That's fine.
Okay, Labarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes, to the ordinance before us.
Correct.
Yes.
Stuluaga?
Yes, I said yes.
I'm looking up there. Alfieri?
Yes, sorry, just trying to keep everybody on their toes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Moving on to new business, we have 10A, which is to approve resolution of 873. And I believe our utilities director, Kip Wiley, is going to address that topic.
May I interrupt for a moment? I'm sorry. I wanted to point out that it is nine o'clock, so we're at our two-hour mark.
Sure, we can, we can give Kip a little more time to sit on pins and needles for his presentation. Sorry. Is everyone comfortable with the, what is 10-minute break or five minutes? 10, 10? All right, we'll do 10. See you back in 10.
The two hours, you take a 10-minute break. Okay.
We get to 11. Midnight, we have
Surely. How often do you go till? Yeah, you got me beat by about nine years. Yeah. Good one.
You guys in City Hall need to mute your microphone.
Tap fees and rates are adjusted based on your guidance. So before you tonight is the 2020 reconciliation of the Water Enterprise Fund. Just, just recall, the enterprise is a business very proud of, actually, and so is our staff. So I'll do my best to walk you through our logic and the I guess, the methodology for the reconciliation, and we'll go from there. So before I use the reconciliation, I'm gonna pull it up on my screen, so hopefully you can see what I'm sharing. Can everybody see that?
It's ugly. It's very colorful.
I kind of lost it in mine, so let me bear with me here.
Oh, that's nice.
My family.
Okay, so here's the
Somewhere? No. We, we still see your desktop.
Yeah.
We, we see your family, Kip.
Interesting.
Looks like the Tetons to me.
Right. Is that better?
Wrong state.
See what I can do here. I do not know what's going on here.
You had it for a second.
Yeah, when you reduced it, it was working.
Okay. How about now?
Hold on, it's setting it up. There you go.
Okay. So before you, is the, the spreadsheet that, that basically lays out everything for the fund, financials, tabs and relates, basically relates the financials into the taps and accounts for our water that we have available moving forward. So the spreadsheet reads from left to right. So in column A, you have the years. And then all the way to column on the Q on the right, you have our fund balance. Council will see a dash line going through the middle of that. That dash line represents actuals and then everything, well, everything above the dotted line is actual numbers. And so we're in column Q on the far right, the 6 million is what I project where the fund will be after we're audited. So hopefully I'm pretty close there. All the other numbers, obviously above that are actual audited numbers. Everything below is future expenses. And I've, I've colored in some I've highlighted in color some key points I want to point out to you. So bottom line upfront, what I'm asking for tonight is a 5% increase in tap fees and actually a 0% increase in rates or water rates for our customers. So now, and I'll go through the method or the logic for that. So moving on, what's highlighted in blue is the 37. That's how many taps we sold in 2020. Moving further to the right, in column M, I just want to point out where I've highlighted in, in gray, or it's kind of a purplish gray, if you will. 143,000, we paid off the remaining debt we have. And right below that, in column N, M, in debt service, you'll see just the dash, meaning in 2021, we have zero debt, which puts us in a great, great position moving forward to make any improvements. Look at potential reservoir and other capital projects. So moving back to the left, I have highlighted in yellow in column E, the 14,592. That is what I, what I would project is the 5% increase to the existing tap fee, residential tap fee that we have. We use a tier-two residential tap fee as our methodology going forward because that is basically what we sell the most. We don't sell a lot of commercial taps. We don't sell a ton of multifamily taps. We sell residential taps in a tier-two is the average residential price. Moving to the right again, I have highlighted in green 542 in column G. That is basically how much money we make per tap on an annual basis. Okay, and why I have that highlighted is right above that, you see 542 as well. I'm recommending for our rates for our customers a 0% increase. Also highlighted in green to the right is the 48.50. That is how much a customer will pay in capital replacement fees on a water bill for the year. I'm also highlighting and pointing your attention to that because it's the exact same as 2020, representing a zero increase. Back in 2010 was the last time we actually increased our water rates other than inflation. And before that, it was in 2007. In 2010, though, we had to increase our rates because our bills needed to be paid, and the fund balance was low enough to where we had to do that. I am very proud of the fact that we haven't had to increase our fees in the last 10, or our rates in the last 10, 11 years, if you will, other than inflation, just keeping up with inflation. I don't like those peaks and valleys that you can get from time to time to cover expenses and capital needs. So I think this spreadsheet's actually served a great purpose in trying to be consistent with our customers. Moving on to the right, you'll see what I have highlighted in red, the $2.3 million in capital expenses. That's in column N. That's what was in the budget for this year. That includes $1 million expense for the reservoir. I don't anticipate us spending that $1 million this year, so the fund balance will continue to grow and prepare to pay more cash for the reservoir as we get closer to that. Also included in this spreadsheet are two other spreadsheets that go into that. Can everyone see? I have the 2020 reconciliation water debt service schedule up. Can everybody see that?
We, we're still on the previous sheet, Kip.
Switching between sheets, I guess, is not my specialty here, so. Bear with me. What about now?
It's coming. Yeah. Here you go.
Okay. Just as in the last spreadsheet, this spreadsheet, everything above the dotted line is actual numbers. Everything below is projections. You'll see in 2021, all the way to the right, I have a zero in there for zero debt we will be entering into. You can see where we paid off existing debt the year, and in 2020, to where we're debt-free. I have 516, $100,000 expense once we start funding the reservoir. Okay, that is $8 million financed over, I think it's 20 years. And at the bottom of that, I believe the interest rate was 2.5%. And then in 2025, I have an additional debt service of $120,000. That is for, at the top of the spreadsheet, possible expansion of conveyance through the Home State Pipeline. So we would anticipate going to Colorado Springs Utilities and asking for their permission and what they would charge us, basically to bring over more augmentation water, which is our most expensive and our most valuable water. Okay, any questions on the debt service spreadsheet? Try this again. See if I can bring up the next spreadsheet. Any, can everybody see the water capital expenditure schedule? Okay.
Yep.
This spreadsheet is exactly like the debt service with the, understanding everything above the dotted line is actual. Everything below is projection, so. You can see in 2020, we had spent around $473,000 in capital expenses. That was to include Twin Lake shares, the metered system, Sunnywood booster station improvements. We did purchase vehicle, the SCADA upgrade. SCADA stands for Systems Control and Data Acquisitions, kind of like the brains, if you will, and the communications of the plant, and then some boring equipment for, so we don't have to tear the roads up as much. We can bore some of our infrastructure. Everything below the dotted line is what we anticipate our capital expenses to be. So you'll see in 2021, on the right-hand side, the 2.3 million I mentioned earlier. Everything below that, we have vacon replacement, subbase improvements, addition of water, the addition of developing more water. I have subbase improvements. One thing I added this year was actually starting to budget for Twin Lake shares where we hadn't in the past. We just took advantage of when they became available. If our fund balance was healthy enough, I've actually started to budget for those to better be more financially prepared in the future. I have the biggest expense here in 2031 in upgrade to the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant was built in the 90s, and it will be almost 35 years old. It's going to need some improvement, so that's the biggest expense really, that we're going to try to pay cash for. We're going to try to pay cash for just about everything with the exception of reservoir and additional conveyance. Any questions on the capital items that I've kind of went over in the, the plan, if you will? Okay.
I have some when you get back to your main spreadsheet.
Okay. I'm going there now.
So my first question for you, Kip, is your 516,000, firstly, the reservoir, I don't know whether discussion of where you are in negotiations on that is executive session stuff, or whether that's public comment. But is that contract going ahead? Is that languishing? Is that our only option? And I know you're budgeting for it, but have, we explored all the options of what that looks like in terms of water storage?
So with previous councils, they were aware of the locations that we had identified. There were two locations that were identified. We had went with the location up Rampart Range Road or Lloyd Gulch because what we refer to as low-hanging fruit made the most sense, and we didn't have to put in a lot of other infrastructure to make it work because it is just downstream of our existing reservoir. So we've explored location options. Right now, our former city attorney was working on the legalities with the property owner to see if anything was even possible in regards to deeds and restrictions on those deeds. And then if that was even possible, then council, we'd bring that to council to see what council desired. And then if that was even possible, then council, we'd bring that to council to see what council desired. So I continued to budget for it. And with, with our former city attorney leaving and the new one, I haven't got the new one on board yet. And I'm kind of waiting for council to decide what we're going to permanently do with the attorney's position. Just because I don't want to get attorney up to speed and then have them leave. So I'm kind of waiting, if you will, and if you would like me to pursue other options, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. So something to maybe wrestle with, not a decision that needs to be made tonight, but that's kind of where we're at with the reservoir.
Okay, so then the allocation of a theoretical budget amount of 516,000. When I crunched out the amortization schedule and eight million at 2.5%, it was a little less than that. It was like 508 a year, which turned out to be about 42,393, if my memory serves me correctly, per month. So I didn't see in your, in your. Projections here where revenues from the community are going to kind of match that type of monthly cost. So can you kind of, so I, this little five, say little compared to $8 million. This 5% tap fee increase. I'm just trying to get my head around, one, where that extra money's coming from. And two, the tap fees, this year you show them as less. So you're matching the 542 as the revenues. But the actual cost of the tap is down about $200 or something, or you can't exactly see the amount, but somewhere under $200. And then it progressively increases significantly in the average tap fee cost. But the actual profit you're making is only, you know, like $10 or something per tap. So I mean incrementally. So why, I just, some of your numbers, I'm not getting my head around, so can you explain it?
I'll try to do my best. You had a couple of questions in there and if I, if I don't get to all of them, just let me know where I left off, please.
Okay.
So the reason for why the, the tap fee in 2021 is actually less than the average tap fee in 2020. So that column is average tap fee. Since we have, since we micromanage our taps very well. We have basically a tiered structure when it comes to residential taps. So we have a tier one, a tier two and a tier three. And I basically base my estimates off an average tap, which is a tier two. And that is based on how many water fixture units are in a home when it's built. So a home that has less water fixture units pays less in tap fees. And a home that has five bathrooms pays more in tap fees. Because of the potential supply that it would require if someone was using all facilities at the same time. Typically, we sell tier two taps for most residential's, but more residential homes. But sometimes we sell a tier three tap, a tier three tap right now, just the water portion of the tier three tap is around. I'm just going to say $18,500 for the, the plant investment fees. Where a tier two is 13,897. So we have different tap fees and it depends on how many homes we sell in those tiers. That's why in, in column E, you'll see for 2021, I have basically 20 taps budgeted. With a 5% increase in the tier two tap. And that's why you see the 14,592. So it's, it's less because I base my estimates conservatively off just tier two average tap fees. Does that make sense with, with that question?
That part makes sense, but the 20 over in your new, new taps column, considering we have huge growth going on. 37 this, last year, and we're only going to have 20 this year and progressively, you know, under 20 and kind of hovering around 20 for the next X amount of years.
Correct.
How is that matching what's the market's actually.
So.
Applying for right now.
Right. So what I've experienced in my tenure at the city is we've sold as many as five taps in a year. And you can see here as many as 46 taps in 2017. So I'll just circle it here over here, in 2017, this 46. I don't have a crystal ball in, in, to determine exactly what tap sales are. I'm trying to be conservative in tap sales and the tap revenue. If I, in my memo, I stated I did not count the 53 units that will most likely be going in, in the village of Tamarack. Because those might be in a two, three year window, it could be in one year. I don't count those one time large capital revenues because I can't, because they're few and far between. If they do come in, then I can adjust this spreadsheet in the future. So you'll see in the spreadsheet also in column E where I have highlighted and read the 17,736. Where I say, in those two years, we're not going to increase tap fees because every other year I'm increasing tap fees 5%. To just maintain a fund balance. I do the same thing with the column H, as far as our total commodity revenue. That actually goes up 1.5% a year. So I'm just projecting revenues to go up 1.5% a year, which is, which would be consistent with inflation. In fact, over the last 12 years, the average inflation has been, let's see. Has been 2.2%. So I'm estimating revenues slightly less than what, what the average numbers are saying. And then also in column I, operational costs, I say operational costs are going up at 3% a year. So I'm estimating expenses to be a little bit higher than inflation. So trying to be conservative with that. So the reason for funding a reservoir, and it looks like we don't have enough money is. I'm building our fund balance to withstand the debt service going forward. For example, like with the wastewater treatment plant, when we expanded that to get the loan, we had to increase our fees. Or our, our, our capital replacement fees as part of the utility bill. I'm trying to avoid that on the water side to where we can fund a lot of it with our fund balance. Or even pay more for cat or pay more in cash if, if we can at the time. That answer your question with revenues?
Very good. Thanks. That's, that's all the questions I have for now. Thanks.
So also what I have in here is highlighted in orange on the left hand side in 2024, 2025 and 2030. You'll see the tap, the number of taps actually increase. And that's because we're bringing more water online. We're developing more of our water at that time. So more water, more taps available. And then I'd like to point your attention to all the way on the right in column Q, what's highlighted in yellow, those three years. 2031 through 2033, where I highlight those years because I'm uncomfortable on those years. Our fund balance is lower than what I would like it to be. In my opinion, it needs to stay at 2 million at all times to cover expenses and downturns. And, and again, everything below the dotted line is an estimate. It's a projection. It's, it's our best guess at our capital expenses, our operational costs, what tap sales are going to be, even what water sales will be. You know, it's interesting, I could point out in here, in 2020, in column K. I'm sorry, in column J, the capital fee revenue just above the dotted line, it's at 180,000. In 2013, seven years ago, it was at 191. We've actually lost revenue in capital replacement fees. And I, and I contribute that to a lot of actually positive things. Because we're doing a better job collecting money, so folks are paying less late fees. Our utility billing is doing a tremendous job with her collection calls. She actually loves that part of it and people are just paying less late fees. So it's actually a positive. I know if you're running a business, less revenue is usually a negative. But we're, it's just, we're doing our best to try to help our customers and, you know, stay consistent instead of having lots of increases or decreases in fees and rates. And, and that just even goes back to the last time we increased our rates was in 2010, which was actually a 13.7% increase. And since then, we've been trying to find a point to where we could decrease our rates for our customers, just because we, that substantial increase. So this year, we would be foregoing a 1.95% increase just based on inflation.
Thank you for that perspective and for being diligent and respecting our clientele, if you will, our citizens. I know it means a lot to folks in the community that you, you guys keep your finger on the pulse. And don't send them huge increases in certain years. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Wiley, Kip, this is council member Rusty Neal. In 2031, I see a big total capital cost or capital expense in column O in 2031. Can you talk me through what is that very large expense?
So I have around a $3 million upgrade to our water treatment plant. When I went through the, the capital expenditure sheet, that was the, that's where our plant's going to be around 35, almost 40 years old. I'm anticipating a substantial upgrade to the plant at that time. So currently, right now, we run around, oh, in the winter, about 600,000 gallons a day out of the plant. The plant is rated for 2 million at, if, if it was operating at its peak. In the summer, the highest I've seen it is 1.7 million gallons a day. That was during the Wildo Canyon in 2012. And right now it runs right around 1 million to 1.1 million gallons a day, which is about 50, 55% capacity. So as we grow, we're going to get closer to that capacity. Also, technology improves and we, and our plant is going to be old to where I'm anticipating a large capital expense to upgrade that.
Thank you.
Okay, also, what we did is Kelly Simkins, our utility billing technician, went around to. Do a fee study and a rate study. So she collected information from surrounding communities, similar sized communities in both tap fees and rates. And if you know, when you look at rates for other municipalities, even fees, it's very hard to tell the difference. Because everyone labels fees differently. They have fees you never even heard of. So it's hard to compare apples to apples, but she went through and did Colorado Springs. Monument, let's see, Cripple Creek, Buena Vista, all the water and sanitation districts just north of Colorado Springs. And I'm very proud to just relate to council that we actually fell in the middle, if not closer to the bottom in how much we charge for our rates. Also with our tap fees. And I can show you those graphs too, if I knew how to work this just a little bit better, you bear with me. Can everybody see that or is it too small?
We can see it now.
Okay. This is a water rate comparison and you see Woodland Park highlighted in red. So this is the average water bill based on 4,000 gallons. You can see we fall to the bottom where our average utility bill is $34.81. Woodman Hills at the top, all the way to Wide Field at the bottom for $23.85. So our rates are still fairly, I'll say compatible with everyone else, if not on the lower side. And that's a good thing to see. So you'll see on here, Woodman Hills, Woodmore Fountain, Tribe View, Colorado Springs Utilities, Manchu Springs, Buena Vista, and then Woodland Park. So very pleased to present to you and very proud of Kelly's due diligence on putting this together because it took a lot of time. So everybody, anybody have any questions on?
That would be a really awesome thing to share with the public. Maybe on what's up with them park or even our Facebook page. That's really valuable information and people can really get some relevance on, on what that looks like in the surrounding area. That's great. And thank you to Kelly.
Let's see, I'm going to go back to the spreadsheet. So some other things I just wanted to point out, I do have 5% tap fee increase in here every year, except for in 2026 and 2027. That could change based on tap sales, like council members who will walk and point out, if we have a year where we sell high taps or a lot of taps, we can adjust that. To where there might be other years where we don't have to increase tap fees to, to stay healthy in a fund balance. Other than that, I just want to point out just the consistency. So everyone's on the same page because I'm throwing a lot of information at you tonight with these numbers. In this spreadsheet, we have a conservative number of taps being sold every year. In the spreadsheet, we have a 5% increase every year in tap fees. Except for those two years, in this spreadsheet, we, we are requesting a 0% increase in user rates for 2021. And I will have to bring to council and ordinance at the next, next council meeting on April 1st, on initial posting and ordinance, basically doing that. Because our rates are automatically increased every year, April 1st with inflation. And since we're recommending not doing that, I'll bring an ordinance to council on initial posting at the next council meeting. Also in this spreadsheet, we are anticipating a 1.5% increase in revenue and a 3% increase in operational costs. And then you see the fund balances on the right and when they dip too low, I've, I've pointed those out to you. And, and we can change capital expenses from year to year if we absolutely need to. But this is our best guess at what the needs will be of our water system moving into the future. So with that, I recommend approval of resolution 873, increasing water and sewer tap fees 5%. And then on a side note, bring in another ordinance to council, not increasing user rates for 2021 on the water enterprise. Any questions? Thank you, counsel.
Counselor, are there any further questions?
I have a question. Kip, do you remember in this spreadsheet from last year with the new single family resident taps? We know we sold 37. Do you remember what that number was anticipated to be this time last year?
Yes, I only budgeted, I think it was 18 or 20 last year as well.
Okay. I, I'm hard pressed to ever increase fees. And especially given that when I do the numbers of the last five years and the average taps that have been sold. Comes up to 35 taps instead of the 20 that the spreadsheet is based off of. Also thinking about the 53 units at Tamarack that aren't included. I know you said that's a one off, so that's why they're not included, but we do know they will go on there at some point. So that's where I'm not necessarily concerned with maintaining a 5% increase for these fees now, knowing that. Historically, we've sold many more taps than, than these revenues are based on. And knowing that the 53 units at Tamarack and the revenue from that will be included. It may not be this year, but it will be within the next few years.
So very good points and I'm not arguing with your points. I just want to give you some more information. So when Trail Ridge Apartments came online back in 2012 and 13, if you look at the top of the spreadsheet, in 2013, the average tap fee went down to $5,500. Because when those units come in, they're a lot cheaper as far as cost of a tap. So it's not a direct correlation, you know, it's going to be that to that. And I've seen it just as bad as five, six taps in a year. So I'm doing my best to be conservative and try to withstand those peaks and valleys is the only reasoning for that. And I, I do my tap balance or my budgeting for taps every year based on the last seven to 10 years.
Thank you.
Kip, I have a question for you. Do you foresee with the limited amount of snowpack that we've had this year, there being water restrictions? And if so, how that impacts your budget?
Yes, water restrictions, double edged sword. You know, I've never been in a business where you promote people not to use your service. But unfortunately, this year, you wouldn't know it by looking outside right now, but snowpack is not the greatest. It's about 99% in the Arkansas Basin, 85% in the Colorado Basin. That's where we get our augmentation water. Local groundwater is also low as part of the presentation to the utilities advisory committee who recommended this to council. We did talk about water restrictions. If that does happen, revenue will go down. As we're asking people to use less water, we sell less water and that's, it's a double edged sword when, you know, I don't want to, you know, bring in less revenue and tell people to use less water. And then all of a sudden I need to increase rates because we don't have the revenue anymore, but that's just the way it is with water. because we don't have the revenue anymore. But that's just the way it is with water.
Right, okay. Counsel, any further questions?
Just one more comment, Kip, and that is, uh, I really appreciate the way that you have laid your, uh, planning, your future planning out, being sensitive to keeping, uh, water rates uh, stable for the, for the consumer. So, I commend you on that. I'm, um, I've been kind of looking at this, why are we doing the 5% increase? But as you presented to me, you are persuading me that you were monitoring it pretty well. And, uh, so, I just, uh, thank you. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you for that comment. I will share with council. Um, I'll see if I can pull it up, uh, as far as our comparison, uh, for tap fees. Let's see here. Bear with me here, I'm a little slow. So... Can you see what's on the screen with the yellow and blue graph?
Yes.
Okay, so this is single-family water tap fees. Um, and we followed right in the middle. Um, we're a business, you know, you gotta, you got something you wanna sell. Um, you always want to get the most bang for your buck. Um, if I know, um, I'm, I'm sorry, but if I know we're gonna sell some taps, I want to get the most we can. So, we don't, because we have a limited amount of taps we're gonna sell. Um, in all fairness, we should increase them more. I'm trying to stay consistent with previous years, but we fall right in the middle with the same people that we did the water survey and we did the tap fee survey. Uh, so, Woodland Park right now, and that's with the increase, that's the 14,008, I'm sorry, that's our current tap fees. And where we rank in regards to those. So, we're right in the middle. I think we're very competitive um, to even ask for a small increase of 5%. 5% on that's around $745.
I just have to add a comment too. If only Kip brand corporations, he'd be one of the best CEOs there was. He does an excellent job with our utilities fund, and, uh, I really do appreciate the work. I appreciate the presentation. And I appreciate the way that you run this fund balance. It is excellent.
Thank you. We, we have, and I, I won't take all the credit because we have a great team. They, they save us a lot of money. We have very experienced crew chiefs um, who are amazing, amazing operators and, and, and people, especially even with their customer service. So, but thank you. I will pass that along.
I'll second that.
Hillary, I'd like to add to that and say that, um, just to remind the council that these water and wastewater funds are enterprise funds, and they're run like a business. They're accounted for like a business. They are for profit, although we don't necessarily want to make a profit, but we do have to reinvest in our infrastructure. And, um, Kip and his predecessor have done a, an amazing job over the years in preserving the health of those funds without exception. And, um, I just have to commend Kip. It's, it's good, it's great to see all this data, and thank you for sharing that with us.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 873?
Is there any public comment?
Oh, I apologize. I do that all the time. I don't see any hands up. Um, Suzanne, do you have anyone?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's a village, Hillary.
Still seeing no hands. And I didn't, I also didn't mean to say approved. Can I get a motion? Oh yeah, approve Resolution 8731. I don't know what's happening. It's late.
All right, Ms. LeVar, uh, I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 873 Series 2021 Reconciliation of the 2020 Water Tap Management Plan and Recommendation of Water and Sewage Plant Investment Fees for 2021, and as Kip had added, to bring to council an ordinance to decrease, what's the wording you had, Kip?
Uh, to no increase, uh, with inflation for water rates.
And no increase for water rates.
I'll second.
Thank you, Neil.
Yes.
Have?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
No.
Peace?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-1.
Thank you, council. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Kip.
All right, it looks through, we've made it through most of our agenda. We're at 11 reports. And we will start with me. And I'm gonna just make sure that I have my dates to announce. Apologize. There they are. All right, on March 19th, we have 3:30 PM to 7:00 PM. That's this Friday, Parents Night Out. Oh no. Yeah. I was thinking it was the Kiwanis Bingo for kids. Sorry. So, Parents Night Out at the Woodland Park Aquatic Center. For more information, contact the Aquatic Center. I got ahead of myself because also tomorrow night, from 5:00, 5:30 to 8:00 PM, is the Kiwanis St. Patrick's Youth Day Bingo. Uh, they had asked if you could register for it online, but if not, I'm sure that they'll be able to accommodate you. Um, so it looks like you could have a really great date night on Friday, all the way from 3:30 to 8:00 PM. Um, April 1st, 2021 is the Chamber Lunch and Learn. It is the Disaster Preparedness in Teller County from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM, and you can call the Chamber for more details. And I don't have anything else to report for this evening. So, move, move to our next council member.
And I don't believe I have anything for this evening either.
All right. Kelly, I think you're up. You're muted.
Kelly, you're muted.
Unmute yourself.
It's late, like Hillary said. Village. I just wanted to take an opportunity to share with the council in particular, but the community as well, that, um, myself and our city manager, Acting City Manager, um, and Dan Williams from the County Commissioners, did meet with Jim Ware, who does the annual salute to American veterans, motorcycle ride and rally. Um, and we are working together to make a collaborative effort with all of Teller County and all the communities in Teller County to hold the event uh, in August. It's actually the 20th and 21st, which is a Friday and Saturday. Um, and we're looking at doing a Friday event in Memorial Park. And then the Saturday staging at the high school and ride through the county, through Cripple Creek, and such on that day as is typical. Um, it's a, we're really trying to craft this as a, um, as a healing, a coming together. Um, and, um, so we're, we're in the infancy, but I, we wanted to share this with the council to try and make this happen. We have a lot of veterans in this community and in this county, and this means a lot to them. And it means a lot to the, the community. If you guys, and Jim, you were there last year, so were you, my, uh, Robert. Um, and, and so was Val, uh, at the high school on Saturday. Um, and there are people lined up with kids, grandparents, everybody on earth, from here to Cripple Creek on the highway, that are waving and waving flags. And it means a lot to the veterans around the whole United States. People come from everywhere. So, um, we're trying to make something happen, make it work. And so we have a great start, and we wanted to inform you all as a council um, that we're trying to make something happen. And Michael, I don't know if you have any comments that you'd like to share from your perspective. But, um, please help me if you'd like.
I think you got it.
Thanks, Michael. Anyway, there'll be more to come. Um, Dan and I are working on a press release. Uh, and we're gonna share that with Michael. We're gonna share that with Jim to kind of just tell the community that we're gonna try and make this happen because it's really an important thing. So, keep, stay tuned. We'll keep you all updated, and it's really gonna be a cool, um, way for us to come together. And hopefully by August, we're gonna be free as the wind. In the wind on our motorcycles. So, my backseat's still open, maybe. I don't know. Dan's trying to claim it, but it's not very comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
Uh, I don't have anything to report, uh, from any of my committees. I, I do have a question for Councilmembers Zuluwaga because we did get that letter from Arden. Are, are you gonna talk a little bit about that in your report section? Because I have a couple of questions that I would add. I'm not gonna blindside you. I have a couple of questions for future um, council meetings, because I did look at it, and I'm not sure I agree with the characterization in the letter. Are, are you gonna talk a little bit about that, Robert?
You know, I, I, I wasn't, and, uh, I'll tell you why. Because I've sought, uh, Ms. Riley's comments on it. I'm just not sure that it's not stirring up old stuff. And I just don't know. I've been kind of pondering how to answer it. And I'm looking to build goodwill for all those who are developing. And, uh, Mr. Weatherford has a property that is adjacent to, uh, property that, that the DDA is working to develop. And I would say, we'll work on that, but it is, uh, it's really stirring up old stuff. And, um, I can only answer the first part of the question unless Ms. Riley wants to. She says that it is not a permanent structure. So, putting a, putting a balcony and a rail and stuff around the cog car is not that. And then where he goes with it, you know, that's a legal question. I'm, I'm not prepared nor capable of answering that. So, I don't know if that puts enough of a picture on it. But do we want to be fanning old flames, or do we want to be building a future?
And Robert, that's why I wanted to be really delicate about it, because I think everybody sitting on council, at least, is aware of the, the, the history um, between the DDA and, and, um, Mr. Weatherford. I did personally go over and look at it. There, there's no deck there. There's just the steps.
There's proposals. Um, there's, DDA is working on some, uh, drawings that were submitted at the last DDA meeting. And I'll talk about that part if you like.
Okay, let's, let's go down that path because I don't want to stir anything up, um, on this one. Let's look to the future. Um, the characterization of the, what exists there, I, I think is wrong. It's just, I did go over this morning, and I wish we could hang a little sign across the steps. Uh, I'm more concerned about the liability of slipping on the steps right now. And that was the only thing that ca- came to my attention when I actually went over to find this deck. Because I, I didn't think a deck was there, and there isn't a deck. It's just steps. That's all I have to say. I'll wait for Robert. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Pat?
I, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Zuluwaga?
Okay, um, well, Kelly, I just want to add a little something to your, uh, your planning here, an idea to it anyway. Uh, if you're looking at having an event in Woodland Park with the bikers on, uh, at Memorial Park, uh, I would be happy to take it to the DDA to look at using Woodland Station as a camping site. Temporary, of course, Sally, a temporary camping site for a number of bikers. Well, because they're all gonna be in town and have to stay somewhere if they're coming to the high school for the staging. So, uh, some porta potties and, uh, the local business would just love the opportunity to, uh, host the bikers from around Colorado.
Thank you, Robert. I'll carry that message, uh, back to Mr. Ware. We're, um, Dan and I are, are just, we're just, like I said, we just met this week with him to kind of see what, what might work. And so I'll share that. And as I said, it's, it's, we're not exclusive. We're just trying to facilitate making this happen as a county effort collaboratively. So, I'll share that. Thank you so much for the offer. And I'll let you know. Thanks a lot. Because, you know, bikers do camp. As long as it's not in the mud. Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, that reminds me of the symphony that we got canceled because of the rain. But, all right. So, um, reports, okay, so let's, let's take the DDA. The DDA, um, met this last, since we met last, um, had a report from, uh, one of the members who was looking to solicit realtors for, um, one of a three-pronged approach for the property, and that is, uh, listing the property. Uh, it's not a straightforward listing. It's not a straightforward property. There's restrictions and requirements on how it needs to be developed. So, anyway, uh, he came back with, uh, uh, not finding a realtor who's, who was willing to enter into that sort of, uh, uh, work with us. The second, uh, prong of that, so the, anyway, I don't know how detailed to get on DDA business. But this, the, the, there's the three points are, the second one is, okay, well, while we're looking for, uh, we're looking for the right investors to develop that property, uh, it's a fabulous open space for the city. Uh, there's already plans from 2016, uh, that were, that are in PDF form that the DDA has presented. Everybody loved it back at the time. This is, I think, prior to some of the hostilities that went on. And, uh, it's a great use of open space, and most of the materials are already on hand, laying around the city at different places. Trees, rocks, gravel, things like that, to create the space where we say in the spring, okay, bring your event, bring your event, here's a space, utilize it. And the, also the other idea behind that is it would create it as a staging, rather than just be an, um, unattractive piece of dirt. For those who are looking to invest in the property, um, it would add, uh, I guess in re- in real estate terms, a staging effect. So, it'll be a staging of the property and u- utilizing it until such time as it's ripe for the developer, whoever that might be, to come along. DDA has a developer there who, um, there's a contract, or, uh, I'm sorry, not a contract, there's an offer out there. Um, and he's deliberating that, or a team of people are deliberating that. At the same time, uh, there's other developments happening, uh, that I'm not at liberty to talk about. So, anyway, um, good things are happening in the DDA as far as I can perceive. Um, what we saw come across our tape, our emails, uh, this week, I think is a step back. I, I think it's an attempt to be inflammatory. Uh, but there's a lot to be said for us all to get together. And, uh, Ms. Riley has indicated that to me, that, uh, it really would be in everybody's best interest for us to look at, okay, what's it gonna take to develop the entire area with the surrounding landowners who also have a vested interest in it? Uh, to make something happen. But that has to be driven in, in the opinion of much of the DDA by the businesses and not by the city. So, we really are at, at the, um, we're there to facilitate, but we're not there to, um, we're not there to do it. So, that's my report of the DDA on Main Street. Um, we had a report from Dola. Dola came and gave us their recommendations and findings on what they see in terms of, of how, um, whether memberships or donations or support can be lent from, uh, private individuals or others in the community without crossing over territory, uh, of agreements that, uh, the Main Street has with the Chamber of Commerce. So, um, he came up with some great positive suggestions, and the Main Street is working with those. And so Main Street, with its trimmed budget from the city, is really, uh, becoming very creative. I'm, I really, I'm enjoying to see what's, what's birthing out of this. So, more news to come on that. And finally, we have got some fabulous audio visual here at the Chamber Council. COVID has certainly moved us to a better level of technology for sure. I'm concerned that we passed a resolution when this first began for council to be able to meet remotely. But I would like to suggest that we start to reexamine either revoking that or modifying that because it's starting to have impact. Like there was quite a number of people here in the chamber tonight. And I know that we have been asked by certain Teller County officials to come and present to council. But they're not coming until all of council is seated. So I would like to put it out there that it's time for us to get back together and do business together. I think the people need to see it. The people are already coming and all of our city staff are back at work. They're in their offices. So there's really no reason council shouldn't be. DDA comes here and meets. So I think it's time we got back together. And that's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Zuluwaga. I do think some council members were concerned about getting their vaccinations before returning. And I think they may at least be at one vaccination now, but not at two yet. So that'll be their health choice to make. And moving on to City Attorney's Report.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Excellent. That's always good to hear from a city attorney. Moving on to interim city attorney, Mr. Lawson.
Was I promoted or demoted?
You know who you are.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So first of all, I'll hand it over to Sally so she can give us a quick comp plan update.
Thank you, Michael. Just want to let council and the citizens know that the stakeholder interviews have been accomplished. However, if there is anybody who would like a one-on-one interview with Logan Simpson, they are still willing to take names and set those interviews up. So do let me know right away if we'd like to add stakeholders to their interviews. We have populated the eight subcommittees with council members, planning commission, citizens and staff. There will be an email going out tomorrow with homework to, for folks to prepare for the first state, first subcommittee meeting, which will occur on March 29th, Monday evening from six to eight PM. It will be a virtual meeting to start with and then each of the committee members will go to their respective groups over Zoom. And then also we have a town hall meeting that will be scheduled for April 14th at the Cultural Center in person as well as through video or virtual. So it will be a hybrid meeting and there will be electronic polling that questions will be asked and you will use your phones actually to give your input and the results will be shared immediately. So it should be really fun at this town hall meeting on April 14th. So things are moving along. If you haven't gone to the website, there is a link from the city website, but on what's up Woodland Park and take the two surveys that are now questionnaires that are posted. And the newest questionnaire is on housing. We do ask a question whether the community believes that campground should allow for permanent housing. So we'll get some feedback from the community on that very topic. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Sally. And then I will turn it over to Emily Kepplis to give us the update on the January sales tax report, sales and lodging tax report.
Thank you, Michael. So included in your packet is the January 2021 tax revenue report. The taxes were collected by the city in February. That you'll see the sales tax collections are starting out well this year with a 10% increase over January 2020. And additionally, lodging tax continues to see positive returns. And again, this is attributed to the new Microtel in town as well as the lodging revs, short-term rental monitoring and compliance software that we implemented last year. So that concludes my report. So thank you. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
I, following on from earlier discussion, I have your last report, which is the Woodland Park annual business license revenues. I understand that's being done by Muni Revs, right? The collect, it's being collected by Muni Revs. So revenue should be about, if I look at the decrease from $50 a license to 4250. So if you look at last year's projections or actuals of 164,000, it should be like 139. But there's only like 34,000 in change in. Is that a problem with this software? I know that I have a business in town myself and I only today confirmed that actually the processing went through it. That was done in January or actually December. So are we having problems getting those revenues in?
So just to clarify that, the graph that's included is totals. So when you're looking at the 164,000, that is for the entire year of 2020. Whereas the 34,063 dollars is just January and February what we've collected.
But aren't all business licenses renewals, I'm sorry, due on 12/31?
Most people actually pay for the year in December and it's not accrued. So actually we do see, so does that make sense? So they're renewing in December, but it's actually for the year 2021. But yes, just to answer your question. So a couple of reasons why we are seeing a little bit less compared to last January and February is because number one, we reduced the license fee, as you mentioned, from $50 to 4250. And also with the Muni Revs, we are having, you know, a little bit of, it's a transition process that we're going through. So that just last week, we sent out over a thousand letters to businesses that we had not had renewals from. So we do, we are starting to see a lot, actually just this week come in of people renewing. But mostly you're seeing, what you're seeing is that it's comparing a year and then it compare, it's, we only have right now the funds for January and February reported.
I think.
If, if I could, those revenues that you are receiving for 2021 revenue for business licenses in December should have been deferred and then reversed at the beginning of the year so that they're reflected in the proper year.
Okay, well. Right, so.
I mean, just to, you don't have to answer me now, but that's something that, that should be looked at because those revenues should be deferred to this year.
Yeah, I would have to look at it in more detail, but again, I think the larger issue is that we're comparing 12 months to two months.
Well, I guess for me, when I look at these stats, what I'm questioning and the second part of my question, the reason I'm even drilling down on this is how many businesses actually did we lose in 2020 because of COVID? How many businesses are no longer in business in Woodland Park? And when you look at the way this graph is, it looks like we had gangbusters in 2020 with 164,000 when the year before was 125. So I'm trying to get a pulse on, are we, are we maintaining our business? Business clientele or are we losing them? And did we lose them in 2020?
Mostly we actually lost, if we lost anything, it's going to be online businesses. That's what we're seeing is that we're not necessarily getting renewals from, you know, there's plenty of online businesses following the Wayfair decision, which was a Supreme Court decision in, I believe, 2018 that affected our revenues. If you notice, 2019, the revenues shot up significantly over the previous year due to that, that, the Wayfair decision, which required online retailers to have to register with municipalities with, register as a business with them if they're selling to folks that live in, in that municipality.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question about the Muni Revs. When this was proposed to council last year to implement it, one of the selling points of it was that through implementing it, there would no longer be a need to charge businesses a small conveyance fee in order to pay their sales tax revenue through this new program. But my understanding is we've implemented Muni Revs, but they're still being charged that, that surcharge to pay their sales tax online through, through the Muni Revs program still.
That was never a selling point of it. We've always, are you talking about the fees to process the payment online?
Correct. Yes. When this station was had last year, as far as the benefits of, of spending the money for the Muni Rev program to switch from the previous program, that was one of the things that was mentioned is that there would no longer be a need to charge them a processing fee to pay their sales tax revenue that was due to the city.
No, that was never a selling point of it. It was that everything was moving online and paperless. Thus saving the city copious amounts of money every year to, you know, mail out, which it costs 51 cents now to mail a letter with the license and, and as well as the tax forms and everything. That was the selling point. So the fees for sales tax, as far as any kind of credit card processing fees, they've always been passed, passed on to the business. That is not new.
Card processing fee. This is just a processing fee for EFT and electronic checks. And that was always the expectation and what was conveyed to the public and the businesses when this conversation was had, that because it was going paperless, there was no longer the administrative overhead and the city had the intention to no longer charge them the processing fee.
No, that was never discussed. So, and actually if people are, don't want to pay a fee, if, if a business is, you know, just doesn't want to pay online or something like that, we are allowing them to send in a check and Jennifer, who's our sales tax technician, she will enter that and, and accept that payment. You know, the old fashioned way, if you will.
I will, I will just chime in to say that there's never been a processing fee for paying online. The only fee online was credit card fees.
There, there's, there's actually a fee. I believe it's $2.50, but don't quote me on that. But there is a fee if you wish to charge, if you wish to pay via EFT, ACH, electronic check.
Yeah, there is a small fee of $2.50 and there, there have, you know, there's always online fees as far as credit card processing. And we are just, as a note, we are looking into actually if there's an alternative pay system that can eliminate that. So we're currently researching that. But it is, again, a very minimal fee of $2.50. And again, we are looking at alternatives if there are ways that we can work with Muni Revs to eliminate that.
Well, I absolutely agree with you. It is an absolute minimal fee that probably wouldn't make a difference to the city just as much as you might claim it's a minimal fee to the businesses as well. So I think we should be able to easily deal away with that just as much as we would businesses to pay it.
And we're not collecting that fee. I want to clarify that. It's, it's the company that's processing the payment. The city is not collecting that fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions for the sales tax report? All right. Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So just a few other things. We, we've been tracking some, some interesting new legislation as many of us have. At the federal level, there is a, a large stimulus package, if, if you didn't know. Hopefully you do know by now because part of it's in your bank account, right? But as far as the city goes, there, there will be additional funds, I believe, to the tune of about $120 billion flowing down to local governments through that stimulus bill. We, we are anxiously tracking what that might mean for Woodland Park. We anticipate hopefully a, a larger sum coming to the city than we saw in 2020 around this time of year. And it would have kind of similar guidelines to it and how it might be spent compared to last year. Might even be a little bit looser restrictions than in the past. So that includes being able to pass aid through to businesses and residents, as was the case last year, in addition to a whole variety of other things. The state of Colorado has also announced its own $700 million stimulus package. And what that will look like for a number of different entities around the state, including cities will be a, a series of grant programs focused on aiding different kinds of businesses, but also stimulating job growth and pay through projects, a lot of infrastructure projects. So there is a possibility that the city might benefit from that stimulus package as well. We are light on details on both of those stimulus packages, but we will certainly keep council and residents apprised of what's going on. Neil is to say, we're pretty excited about that. Hopefully get some more aid for folks who are hurting out there, certainly. And finally, on a lighter note, I like to try and thank our staff who is quite honestly amazing. Our snow plow drivers, I think are going to need at least six months to catch up on sleep. They've been going nonstop. Certainly there's hiccups with the storm like the one we just went through and we appreciate folks' patience. But we, we have a rock star crew who's just done a great job. So thanks, thanks again to Bruce and his team on the streets team and Steve for the facilities team. We even had some extra folks like our public works director who pitched in and plowed a few roads herself and did a great job. So I, I really appreciate all their great work. And special gold stars to Kelly Simkins, our, our water utilities tech, who's just amazing at everything she touches. She put together a lot of those metrics that you saw today. And as wonderful as Kip is, Kelly's is, is really, I think, think the brands behind that, right, Kip? I think. She's great.
Absolutely.
And I, I certainly want to second what Kip said about our, our customer service rep and utilities Judy Bundy. She, I've never seen anyone who is so psyched about her job and serving people, honestly. She loves helping people get their water bills paid. And yeah, she has helped people pay their bills on time. I, I guess we'll cheer for that. Of course we will. But she's, she's really great too. We're, we're privileged to have both those women on our staff. So, and Kip's pretty cool too. So Kip is very good at managing our money. I'm starting to think of him as Director Cheapskate. But, but really he's just a very effective fiscal manager. So we appreciate Kip too. So thank you all. That's all I got.
Mayor Protem, before we adjourn, I remember our, our attorney said that he didn't have a report, but I remember when we contracted with him that he promised us pro bono that he would bring his sense of humor. So I, I just want to put it on the table and ask you, what words of levity do you have for us this evening?
Careful.
No kidding. Nothing.
I know you. Be careful.
Okay. I'm not as dumb as I look. I'll just leave it at that.
All right. We don't have anything further. So on that note, we're going to adjourn. Everyone have a good evening. Thanks for an excellent meeting.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Robert. None of my current inventory of jokes could I repeat.